All right, it's called a work session, but order.
And I'll go ahead and do a review of tonight's council agenda, pausing for any questions for clarifying for staff before we get going. Tonight's agenda in our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from April one. Our contract approval for the revised toll cell water agreement with the city of Portland. Contract approval for the transit technology implementation project as well as, and that's the consent agenda. And under resolutions, we have the our public hearing, which is continued from a previous meeting on resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight. Which is the adoption of our advanced financing reimbursement district for the three sixty second through Bell Street extension. Well, then round off our evening with the report for RITC manager as well as our committee and council reports. Uh, but before we get going with our work session tonight, Jeff, we at least call them all.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, present.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Well, welcome to our work session. We've got Rochelle and crew here to talk about our Deer Point Park. Um, preferred concept review. Welcome Tyler, you wanna get us going?
Yeah, I'll give a brief intro, then I'll pick it over to Rochelle and.
Right.
Um, so council, you know, you're aware that during the budget process, we had a goal of constructing. It's been a long time in the making. For those of you that aren't aware, that's off of the end of Debarco, but it's up to highway twenty six and that in that. Gear point neighborhood, hence the name. And so we have some funding set aside in the budget. Rochelle and her team have been hard at work in doing a conceptual plan for what you can actually fit on that site. And so tonight, um, they have a sort of, I hate to say final, but a, um. Not one of three drawings like you saw last time, but a more revised, um, honed in preferred concept plan. And so with that, Rochelle, I'll let you add anything else and then we'll kick it over to Lanko Hanson.
Okay, well, just, um, real quick, just to emphasize what, um, Tyler had, uh, talked about. Tonight we'll be presenting, um, the preferred concepts. And it's input where the council would be able to take a look at those. We did come up with those three preferred concepts based on community input. The Parks and Trails Advisory Board, we sent out surveys to the neighborhood, about two hundred surveys actually received fifty four comments back. We had an open house in the meantime. Um, we had fifteen to twenty people attend that, so. Um, we felt that was a really a good turnout. So, um, so far, we're really pleased with the public engagement around this neighborhood park. And a lot of excitement too. I think they've been waiting for this part for a while. So, um. Yeah, um, I guess without further ado, I'll hand it over to Lanko Hanson, but this is a really great opportunity to take a look at, um, how it's evolved to today. And then the next step will be an open house, April eighteenth. And then we'll also, uh, get feedback from the public at the April eighteenth open house.
Question on your survey, you sent out two hundred?
Yep.
To the neighborhood?
Yep.
How via?
Yep.
Post office or?
Yep, we actually pulled the addresses off of the title company and then sent them out to the.
Twenty five percent response.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Well, above average.
Self addressed.
With, yes, we did encourage self addressed envelopes to return them, so.
Still, now that's a really good turn for.
Amazing.
Cold. The contact.
Simpleness of it and the actual success compared to some of our other endeavors that we've done in the past.
Yes.
And sounds like it really works. I don't mean to get a sidetracked, but I will forget it if I don't mention it otherwise. We should consider geofencing some of these areas to get out the word, right? Like, I don't know if anyone understands what geofencing is, but we can target a certain geographic area with a message that when they're on. Social and stuff that pops up, so we can pick the literal geographic boundary of the area we want to push that message to. So anyways, just something considered. Sorry Rochelle, I told you it'd be off track. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll hand it to Brian and Kurt.
Be ready for the slide.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we're excited to be here. I think it was March fourth, we were here, uh, well, actually virtual because of a snow day, but good to be back in person. And see everybody's face, walk through the refined site plan. We got some good feedback from this group a month ago and then. Um, as Rochelle mentioned, just getting a lot of feedback from the both the public open house and that survey. And then also we met with the parks board middle of last month as well. And, um, got further input from them. So tonight, just a couple of things we want to touch on.
Sorry.
Um, looking at showing you that refined site plan and how we got there. And getting some input on some of the specifics of the the play area and some site furniture. And then also looking, we'll touch on at the end, just the overall project schedule for the design and the construction of that. So real briefly, just touching on those three options that we looked at last month. Uh, just trying to look at three varied options to present to both council and the public to start the imagination of what that neighborhood park could be. And honestly, not to spend too much time on this, but typically when we present multiple ideas, it's always this, um. Blending that comes good ideas from each one that rise to the surface, then we bring it into that refined plan. But it's really striking with presenting to council and also at the public open house. And then very much mirrored in the feedback that we got through the the mailing, the the survey, the mail in survey. Option number two in the middle really rose to the top and both. Uh, in general, the plan, but then we asked specific questions in that survey about the walking paths, the location of the play area, the location of the sport court. And that in in all categories was really the preferred option. So I think what you'll see tonight, um, on the next slide is it's a refinement of that, but it really sticks closely to the spirit of option two. And there's a few comments that we want to touch on tonight, things that we heard from council and that also came up in the public, uh, open house. Mostly around the the sport court that to speak to tonight. Um, I think overall the input that we got from this group as well as the neighbors was basketball was the preferred sport. I will say that there were, there was some support for pickleball, but it it appeared and Rochelle, you can back me up or not. But it seemed like it wasn't the neighborhood that was specific, the neighbors that were specifically supporting that, but the neighbors themselves were more in support of basketball. There were comments about, um, looking at a full court. What's shown here is just a hat, a little half court for basketball. There is technically speaking, um, in plan view, you could fit full court on there. But as you see, these the kind of the squiggly lines, those are the contour lines. So those are one foot intervals, contour intervals. And if you rotated that and did a full court lengthwise, kind of parallel with highway twenty six, it would fit. But it really starts to increase the amount of site grading and the the costs associated with the routine balls to fit that into this site. Um, so it's, it's on the one hand doable, but as we start to look at the overall budget for the park and how that fits in with providing the rest of the pathway amenities and the shelter and the play area. It just becomes a very, um, cost heavy component to develop.
Do, just as we look ahead, can you spell out what that means for us at some point? This.
Yeah.
Which is.
Dollar value. Yeah.
Like, what is that?
Yeah, definitely.
Cause we all have different thresholds for that, so.
And I think to to be key back on to that, another comment that came up in both contexts was, um, covering the the basketball court. Which similarly, we did do quite a bit of research into that and the numbers were coming in pretty high and anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So here's my pushback and it's not at you, it's over here to these guys. You know where I'm going. If it's sandy architectural style, our kids deserve basketball courts over pretty covers in our in our park areas. Like, we've got to be able to figure this out. So like, what are we quoting? Are we quoting like sandy style, beautiful coverings that then just continue with our kids playing in the rain? Like, is that what we're doing?
My understanding of the quote, and please jump in if I misunderstood this, is it's, um, it's not sandy style. Specifically, there are sandy style elements, right? There's a pitch roof and I saw some some, uh, brief photos or quick photos earlier today of that. So there are sandy style elements, but it is not sandy style compliant and it was still coming in at that five hundred to seven hundred and some thousand dollar price range.
Yeah, if I could just add on to that, we, um, we engaged a a couple of different suppliers and this was just really saying. Help us out with a kind of a general quote, given the the size of this and and most of what we were getting back were steel, steel frame. Um, you know, corrugated roof, uh, structures and and that's, those were the the half a million mark. And and we understood if we had to go into the sandy style, it would, you know, go up exponentially from from that, but.
Was that for a half court cover or a whole court?
It was a half court. It was basically what that measures out right now is about seventy five feet by seventy five feet. And so we just drew a box around that and said, help us out with what you think a a cost would be, um, uh, to supply that. Um, I I do have to say too, and and we haven't gotten into too far, that didn't even include the labor. You know, those typically are a kit of parts, so that would be added, uh, to that.
Is the majority of that cost, excuse me, is the majority of that cost in the the grading and the and that part? Or is it an actual construction in material?
Well, that, the the number that we've been, uh, mentioning relates just simply to the covering it it itself. That doesn't include the the surfacing for the, uh, half court basketball court or fencing will probably need some fencing, um, uh, around it, um, as as well.
Five hundred to seven hundred thousand for the cover alone?
That's, that's the quote that we got. And and I, and I, you know, the.
Really high. Cause we were built and I just want to push back a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Like, we're building these covered structures, which I realize are smaller, but on a much smaller. Cost per square foot than that.
Something that came up was just literally.
Huh? It's not more close to a hundred. Yeah, so you can build seven of them.
Right, but that's seventy five by seventy five.
If you put a post in the middle.
That that was it. They were saying, you know, if it wasn't a basketball, it's a really big picnic shelter and we could have columns in the middle, then you're not spanning. That was one of the big costs.
I love Google, because Google says between eighty thousand and six hundred thousand with the average project costing two hundred thousand. That's full court coverage for a corrugated roof, just on, what is it when I type, what does it cost?
Yeah.
And it's hard.
No, I I think those are, those are good points and and we did our own Google search as well. And we thought, well, let's just contact someone and and certainly I think we move forward with this, we spread that that much, much wider.
Um, this is broadly though, an issue that I I'm just interested in more work on, whether it's basketball courts or whatever. Is, I mean, are there things that we're not, that's not moving ahead online? Because of our style at these parks and and these parks, we want to look beautiful. So like Kathleen, I'd want to hear your input on this totally, right? But I just want to make sure that we're not like pricing ourselves out of opportunities for our youth. And that it's what our council truly is wanting to get out in the sandy style. And maybe I I'm not speaking for everyone and we want. Our sandy style elements to very much be carried into our parks, but at a minimum, I feel like we need to have a conversation as a council about about that.
I do. I think it's off topic, because I think.
Yes, it is.
Cause we got, I mean, a quote that's too high that isn't sandy styles, so I mean.
Well, sure, sure. I, yeah. Yeah, we do have a quote. Yeah, I don't know how, I I'm not buying the quote, but.
Yeah, great. Well, and I'm also concerned that even looking at extra cost. You know, in terms of X, aren't we better off having a full court than a covered half court, you know? So I think those are more.
Well, yeah, well, part of getting back to exactly on topic, do we want another uncovered court? And we do have uncovered courts in the city of Sandy. You know, we're not accomplishing the covered court that we were trying to get.
I think it goes back to what the neighborhood wants.
That true.
You know, and so, you know, I I think, I mean, for me personally, if I had my brothers and my kid could get out and play basketball. On a court that's not covered, I'd rather be able to get out and play basketball on a court that's not covered than not have a court at all. So.
Well, I just pointed out, these these kids on that, so the on this view, the last three houses going up the street there. There's a basketball who sat out on the street there and it's been there for like five years. They play out there every every day, so that's just. So it'll be used.
Yeah.
But there's lots of opportunities playing the rain. There's zero opportunities to play pickleball in the rain. Like, that's my point is there's other opportunities to play one sport in the rain. You're trying to find a way not in the rain for them to play.
I disagree.
So we may want to go to an alternative. I know, but we've mentioned a couple of times that other kids play in the rain a lot, so I make sure my point's getting across.
I'd be curious, so we have a full court at Tupper and what about at, uh? Timberline?
We have a, we have a full court.
Full court at at there. And then at, uh, Hamilton, we have a half court, is that right?
You know.
Barlow Ridge.
Barlow Ridge, I meant, is that half court or full court?
I think it's half court.
I think it would be a half court as well. It's got hoops on some men, but it's not.
Full size. Anyway, I I am curious about, like, what did the neighbors say is half versus full court? Did, was there preference or?
Are you sorry, you're asking us?
Yeah.
Like, there was, there was definitely support for basketball and there were some folks that that said, how about, would you consider full court? So it was a mix, I would say.
Okay.
It wasn't, all voices said we want full court, but it did come up.
I'd be curious what the neighbor said and I mean, you know, you know, me, Rochelle, go big or go home.
Yeah, and it's one of the things we'll look at too, and that was a request by council is what would the additional cost be for retaining wall? Cause if we did full court, um, we'd have to change some and and work around some of the challenges with the topography there, so we can, we can.
I I'd be just, do you have any idea what about magnitude of costs it would be to go full court versus? Or can you angle a little bit so that, you know, you don't have?
We can definitely look into that. I can't give you a number off the top of my head, but it would be, you know, several feet of retaining walls on each end. But I think that, um, we have our open house this Thursday and it's a good opportunity for us to be able to engage those folks that are there and specifically ask. Not that, just to present that idea of how valuable is it to you, like, would you be okay with a half court? What would the advantage full court mean to you? And just to get that additional feedback.
Yeah, just allows more you, you know, more kids, but also just looking at your drawing up there, you know, you know, instead of making it perpendicular to the highway and stuff, you know. Angling it more so that it is kind of more with the, uh, contour lines, again, less, hopefully less, uh.
Yeah.
Excavation and all, it wouldn't have to be all lined up and everything, but if you could get it to work more with the topography, um, rather than, you know, being kind of angled.
Definitely worth studying.
I I was wondering, you know, I'd rather have a full court covered. If I don't have a full court covered in the in the budget, then full court and then half court and covered if it could, if not, something anyway. But I wonder if, uh, I know there's some pretty flat ground in there. There an alternative place to put this puppy instead of having it? And I know there's some reasons for putting it where it's at now, but there's some fairly flat ground in the existing part of the park. Could you have put it there and not do all the, yep, I, that's the place I'm thinking.
Right to the center green area.
You mean talking about number four?
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say to you, those contour lines are pretty wide. Well, we have a significant cost savings in excavation and retaining wall.
Okay, it's on the street.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm correcting me, I'm wrong, but I think there's some utilities that run underneath that area that, um. I don't know if that's a challenge to put a basketball quarter for it, but there's.
Yeah. What what I would say, if you came back to us and said, we we'd really like a a full court. What I think we would probably do is first of all, take a look at rotating that court. Um, and we might push that arced path a little bit closer to the street. Because I I think that if we think about all the locations and the previous options, we looked at a number of them. The the advantage of that has been, um, so close to kind of the highway and how how noisy it is. It's far away from from, um, all all the homes. And so I think we'd really try our best to have it work in that that location, um, and and, um, slightly adjust some of the other elements.
And to piggyback on that, I will say one thing in talking to several of the neighbors at the last open house was just a concern of having amenities. Right next to their house, kind of noise or activity, they wanted a little bit of buffer, as much as we could provide, that was really important. So.
But to the mayor's point, I I'd love to have a covered full court. You could put it on a piece of flat ground and make it three hundred thousand instead of a half a million just for the covering. Maybe we could put up with a little bit in lowly someplace, maybe we could do some screening and those sorts of things that we've been in path. Yeah, I I think, uh, from my viewpoint, I would love to see maybe a little bit of check, see if there isn't some other way.
Okay. Oh, one quick question. Um, where's the money coming from?
Great question. So we have one point five million in the current biennium budget for this project. Um, the project is also, I haven't got to this slide yet, so I don't want to jump too far ahead. But in a couple of slides, you'll see an overall schedule and you're going to see that it crosses over into the next biennium as well. So if there were other add-ons, modifications, coverings, depending on what the development. Um, community looks like at that point in time and what we're projecting for SDC is there's probably room for additional, um. Uh, allocation of funds to other components of the project.
That if the project stays. We haven't had a project yet that's stayed.
Yeah, so you know, I think the thing that I've had a hard time with and we haven't talked about this Rochelle, but. My experience with park construction is vastly different than what this park construction looks like. The kind of the park construction projects that now I'm familiar with are skate park, pump track, demo. Um, it it's a kind of a whole different.
Sure.
Apples and oranges, we're taking Council Walker's points. Um, and so I think this, I'll need to take some time to really better understand the scope of work and a smaller scale project. And really understanding like, where where do you see cost overruns? What are the ramifications of that on a smaller scale? Uh, but obviously we have some experts that have built many parks that could probably speak much more eloquently to that question, so I'll turn it over to you to add anything else you'd like to add.
Well, the one thing to consider that's unique about this project is the partnering with the adjacent developer. And, um, as part of that initial agreement, um, they will be at some point doing grading, uh, pathways. And so we know that the timing of this park is also somewhat tied to to their development or figuring out a path forward. Where we're leveraging what they are supposed to do with an earlier construction. So I think that will also help out to a certain degree with the funding.
So that that's kind of a news to me, so, cause I I I didn't expect the development to the east to go forward very soon.
I can, I can speak to that. So I've been in communications with them over the last six to eight months, just, you know, trying to time this and figure out when they're hoping to start. It is up in the air. However, um, part of one of the things that we've talked about and it's in the final order is that there are some requirements that they need to do. And so, um, when we discuss the schedule, which will be at the end of the slide, you'll see how we're sort of trying to align that work. And if we do get to the finish line first, um, one of the things that we have been talking about is potentially going back and forth as far as maybe they come in and they do the grading first. Or we negotiate some sort of development agreement. And that was part of the impetus too, why we wanted to sort of start this process now. So when we do work with them, we have an idea of where we want to put paths, how we want to work with the adjacent, um, bull run. So, um, we're, we're sort of getting ahead of the game here, so we have an idea of what we want to see with them when the time comes to partner.
Good job.
Next up?
Yeah. So I think we're definitely getting some good feedback on the basketball court and developing some options for that and coming back with costs and implications of full court covered. And the next thing we want to touch on was the play area itself and what the character of that could start to look like. Um, we on this slide have just included a number of different images of of styles and types of play equipment. And, uh, anything from nature play to the bottom inclusive play or something that's, you know, a a signature element. A large climbing, freestanding climbing structure in the bottom middle. Or a combination of both, nature play and modern, um, on the upper right. And then obviously the the other, like, well, what are, what are we missing or what what would you like to see?
We're gonna cover it, right? I'm sorry.
We'll do. So we we got some good feedback from the parks board in terms of, um, just considering the the other types of play equipment in nearby parks and diversifying. So people that this, either living in this neighborhood or nearby have a variety of experiences. Other other input that we received for them was definitely highlight the inclusive play, um, making sure that it is universal and accessible to all.
What is the closest park to this part that doesn't, where they don't have to cross the highway?
And it's a good.
Timberline.
Yeah.
So that's not, that's not really a walkable or to me, close proximity. So this is really all by itself when you add a town, so less worried about it if it duplicates a feature or nothing.
And those amenities at that park specifically are, at least from my experience, geared towards much younger kids. And that's like my three year old really enjoys that type, yeah.
Timberline is really young with the basketball.
Yeah, yeah. So some of the other amenities for a a little bit of an older kid would be a nice.
Okay.
Add from my perspective.
And, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kevin. No, go ahead.
I, I'm just not, um, up to date on like what current, can you explain to me exactly what inclusive play means?
How long of a presentation do you want?
Just like, like.
It it's, it goes, the short answer is, I think people think of people with, uh, mobility, uh, impairments. But it goes way beyond that to involving people of all abilities, cognitive abilities, physical abilities, any any type of impairment. Just making sure that we're making play experiences for for everybody. So, um, that's, that's a very broad answer, I think, but it is being specific in the types of play equipment that we pick. That provide a whole range of skill experiences and skill opportunities and not just one thing that's usable in in one specific way.
Like, like sensory, um, like, um, kids that are in the autism range, um, tend to like more enclosed spaces. So we'll make sure if we have a big climbing rock, um, it'll have like a little nook or something that's a little bit more enclosed. So it provides, uh, challenges for kids of all mobilities, but also other, other, um, other issues as well.
Thank you. I just.
And we're doing quite a bit of inclusive play structures at the community campus Cedar Park, right?
Yes, yes, we are, yeah.
And it extends to as well as like accessing the play features and the amenities and.
Mobility is definitely a part of it, sure.
Well, of course, you know, my favorite thing, I'll just say right now, is the free standing climbing structure. Cause I think those things are so popular and the taller the better and just kids love them. They're, every park I've been to that has them, they're crawling all over it, climbing it. I also like the modern play features, just because I think they're longer term, um. You know, longer lifespan, you know, we've got fantasy forest and all, but you know, given that you got a lot of wood and everything, that's a little bit harder. You know, it's appropriate in some places, but I I am a little bit concerned that, you know, I don't know, Tiana could probably speak up here. But, you know, just the maintenance and the usability in the rain and things like that, it's, it tends to stay, you know, wetter longer and and all. But, um, and and you can still include, um, you know, some of those, um, what are the platforms things, you know, the, what is called the?
The nest.
Yeah, kind of the nest swings and stuff with your swing set, set and you kind of create that. You know, so that they're in the middle with all the other, uh, swings. And I'm not so much, you know, personally a fan of the nature play, just because I think, you know, we have the woods. We have nature play all around us and in in many, you know, in the open spaces and in the woods there by the park.
That's park is as far away from the trails and everything else as anything.
Right, yeah, but I, you know, I I I think it's.
But didn't you say, I I'm not sure that it's up to a vote at the moment, but didn't you say that the preference was for inclusive play from the responses from the public, right? Is that right?
Yeah, and I guess it's worth noting that with inclusive play, it's almost like an overlay that you can apply to any other type of play. Like whether it's nature play or not, or modern play, any of those can be, uh, inclusive principles can be incorporated into that type of play.
So when I start seeing like the climbing structure and I admittedly, I'm just looking at one picture here, I see liability. Some kid hanging himself up thirty feet up or so.
I only see liabilities, they walk to it, not.
Is that right? Okay.
Actually, there, I mean, can you speak to that? That's, you know, a good point to make, but, you know, I've done a little research on that, but let's kind of hear your thoughts on that.
Um, well, um, I I think in terms of of liability, um, the play manufacturer has done vendetti in such a way. That, um, it doesn't have, um, small openings that are four inches or or less. And those tend to be kind of red, red flags. Um, I think that, um, we also, the the safety surface that we use is is absorbent. And, um, you know, as a, I think a lot of us here growing up with, uh, instead of having bark, we had asphalt as the safety surface. So I think kind of balancing of having some things that kind of encourage, um, a a little bit of danger is always kind of healthy. Um, but I I think we're, we all understand that we don't want to do anything that is, uh, that is a liability.
They've put these in quite a bunch of different places and yeah, like you said, the surfacing underneath is key. And, you know, and and my concern is, again, that we have all these top lots and having these structures, you know, a variety of structures. But stuff that will excite and challenge older kids a little bit is something that we don't have in most of our parks and that we need. So that's, that's important.
And just to add to the safety aspect too, so Tiana is SIPS certified, which is Certified Playground Safety Inspector. So we do regular inspections, make sure the fall material is at where it needs to be. And then, um, fortunately, we have a fixed recreation unity this year too, so, um, those cover us from any of that liability, so hurry for that, so.
Good plug.
Next year's.
Well, that was my joke, that's the walking.
Oh, yeah, you didn't get to see that was you got.
When is your, uh, meeting, is it the eighteenth?
Yes, the public open house, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's.
Yeah. So we don't have to spend too much time on this, but wanted to touch briefly on some of the site, potential site furnishings throughout the park benches. Maybe bike racks, definitely picnic tables, trash receptacles and these. maybe bike racks, definitely picnic tables, trash receptacles. And these specifically, these images here were this, um, it's a kit of furniture that we developed for Cedar Park, working with Rochelle and her group there to see what's going to hold the test of time, uh stand up against the elements and folks visiting the park and using it. So yeah, just starting to look at some of those study that we did there and replicating that for Deer Point as well.
Is that real wood on the table?
In that picture it is, yes. Which I in other districts we found is um more easy to maintain is you go down to the hardware store and get another plank and put it right back on. Versus, I mean, recycled, you could do the same, but you might have to order it from a special supplier. And then so to the schedule here, um, we are currently in the bar, the yellow bar in the top left. This is the programming and design phase where going from our three options down to one refined site plan. Right here in the middle of April, tying up the putting a bow on this with our uh open public open house later this week. Um, and then really transitioning, taking that input that we've received, taking that refined site plan and moving into the construction document phase there, kind of that dark orangish color. And they're still in that phase, still time to establish the um things such as the basketball court, half court, full court, covered, not covered. Um, still making decisions like that in that process. So that really goes through uh middle of September, tailing into uh permitting and bidding. And then just a slight break early in twenty twenty five, mostly due to weather. And then just hitting the ground running in spring once the weather's really good, construction wrapping up um mid fall, the grand opening of the park.
More questions? I think it'll be really exciting, a great park when it's completed.
Boy, yeah.
I just have a comment about that timeline. And I was just wondering if there's any way to move the opening a few months earlier, because it seems kind of almost innocuous to open it up in October, when it starts to get cold and it won't be able to be used at least progressively very long. Um, so I didn't know if there was any opportunity to move it a few months um earlier. That's just something to think about.
Yeah.
And then the other is I would love to see more research done into the coverage, because just in the short time you were talking, and I do construction in my main job. And I'm not advocating to bid for this at all, because we don't do that. But I I found everything that said I could build a a a full court cover for anywhere between a hundred and sixty and two fifty. And then if I wanted to make it sandy style, I can imagine that's another hundred and fifty or two hundred. That's still under five hundred. And what you presented just showed awfully high. I know that was just one person. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to find national suppliers of basketball court covers that can be modified to fit the sandy style that would be inclusively or less expensive. So just a just a thought for for future.
You know, you could play basketball in November under a cover.
And also on that cover structure, I don't like the idea of a metal pole building, pole barn that's turned into a basketball. It's it's the least attractive option to me, but um I wonder if uh, what do they call it? The uh tinsel structures um with a, you know, those those materials stretched between wires and poles might be a a cost effective option. I mean, we're not, we're not looking for weatherproof warm, we're just looking for rain protection.
Yeah, right.
And they do offer some designs there that could provide uh snow and ice loads, but we went in winds, they'll be it. So.
They had um good examples of those when we visited Bend Parks and Rec. Yeah, the fabric, uh but I don't, I don't know how, what kind of slope you need and.
They're this way or spread out in triangles or whatever, but it might be a different way to look at the the problem space, maybe cheaper.
Yeah. Yeah, I think our our takeaway is definitely we'll be looking at the full court, how it might be positioned, and then certainly a lot more research into uh different types of covering.
And I think that um I'm not that, I don't want to mull the metal pole barn, but I think there's way, you know, I've seen some, you know, different things like the school district and all that, you know, they've kind of put up some stuff. And there is ways to, you know, kind of for the pillars to, you know, wrap them in stone and, you know, wood um and things like that to kind of lend them a little bit more of a sandy style look. They don't have the same roof pitch, um, they have a shower roof pitch, but there's, you know, I think still ways to kind of lend itself to sandy style without meeting every part of the code, if, you know, if it's necessary for such a large structure and.
At what point does the code apply?
Well, what I'm saying is that different entities have come to us and asked for exceptions to sandy style. Mark, what's his name, with move the thing got like eleven exceptions and then came in for eleven more and we said no on most of them. So I'm just saying that we can apply for an accept of variance too, if we want to, you know, because the type of use that we're, you know, we're not building a Dutch Bros or something like that. So, you know, it may be prudent, especially if it saves us, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. So.
Absolutely. Um, you know, I think what we've heard loud and clear is that if we can find a way to make a cover that is attractive and is not an eyesore for passerby from the highway or the community, um, but that's the avenue that the council would like to go in. So we'll bring forward some sort of creative plan to make sure we can.
But you mean that's a common showpiece off twenty six. That's what people are gonna see.
That's been in, that's been in my head too. And so we just.
Yeah.
I said it quietly over here, but just so I say it so everybody hears it, is we hold other people to the sandy style. We should not be making rules. It's an exception to ourselves.
All right. And I agree a hundred percent, but there's also a difference between parks and commercial development. But we could, I hear what you're saying. I am with you.
We put a pole barn, won't it match that DOC one that's right next door?
You mean Oda?
Oda, the Oda one.
All right. Well, thank you guys. Really appreciate. Uh, we will take a break and be back at, let's really start at seven though. It's been getting so much time here. Everybody, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome everyone. For normal, go ahead and start with the review of tonight's agenda. Um, we will uh uh call the roll and we'll get into any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Then get into public comment. I do have one submitted here. Uh Jeff, have we had any others online or in person submitted?
That's the only one I have here.
Well, I, oh, give me a second here. Uh, my, I I see other people here, a reminder similar to the last time we had a meeting. Um, and we will be having a public hearing and that will be the uh opportunity for you to testify at that time. Uh, the public comment or for the all other items people might want to testify on, but it's like I just have one submitted for that. Uh, we'll then get into the consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from April first. Our contract approval for the revised wholesale water agreement with the city of Portland, as well as the contract approval for the transit uh technology implementation project. We'll then get into resolutions, which is that public hearing on the resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight for the adoption of the advanced financing reimbursement district for the three sixty second to Bell Street extension. After that, we'll wrap up the evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll for tonight?
Yes, Council Maiden.
Present.
Council Smallwood. Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exner.
Here.
Council Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Present. Thank you, Jeff. With that, is there any proposed changes for tonight's agenda?
I don't have a change. I do just have one question on the water rates for the um full run, a great agreement.
Oh, for when we get to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Um, with that, um, we'll go ahead and get into public comment. Again, for those of you here for the public hearing, wait for that moment. Uh, but I will call um for a Holly Maines um and to please come to the podium. Um, you, Holly, you will be provided uh three minutes for public testimony. Please state your name and address for the record and welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
Hi, my name is Holly Maines. My full address is uh three zero one six zero Southeast Haley Road, Boring, Oregon nine seven zero zero nine. Um, I'm here as a community member and I'm here today to oppose donkey basketball. Donkey basketball is being held this Wednesday, April seventeenth at the Sandy High School. The FFA or Feature Farmers of America is putting on the fundraising event. I emailed the contact person on the poster. I'm going to read my email that I sent to Reagan on Friday, April twelfth. She has not responded. Hi, my name is Holly Maines. I have two miniature donkeys and I have provided um pictures if anyone wants to see um my exhibits. Um, my two miniature donkeys, Dilly and Dally, we live in Boring, Oregon. They are rescue donkeys and we are their fourth home. I love them and they are very special to me. So when my son and I were walking into the Sandy Clackamas County Bank yesterday to do some banking, I saw your donkey basketball poster. I immediately knew that I needed to oppose this upcoming event of donkey basketball. Let me make this clear, that I support the FFA in fundraising for this association. The silent and live auction being held on April seventeenth at the Sandy High School sounds appropriate, but riding donkeys on a polished basketball court is abuse. They will be so scared. This makes me so sad to think of them being treated like this. The coin hooves are not meant to be walking and running around on polished slippery basketball courts. At least the rodeo clients with bulls and cattle are able to walk, trot, run and buck on layers of sand and dirt in an in an arena. It is not safe for miniature donkeys and standard donkeys to be holding a person of more than one hundred pounds on their back. This is just a really old timey and barbaric sport that is accepted throughout our beautiful United States of America. I support the FFA, but I beg you, please do not have donkeys participate in donkey basketball. If you must, can you please have an acorn bet there at the event in case a donkey gets hurt by falling and being pulled? Their hooves are so special and a good farrier may need to be present as well. I have contacted Suzie at Subswish in Sandy, Oregon, and the Oregon Donkey Sanctuary in Oregon City, Oregon. I have provided exhibits also. I have a letter from John and, I mean, I'm sorry, Rhonda and Jim Urquhart from the Oregon City Donkey Sanctuary. They were able to shut down a donkey basketball event at one of their local high schools back in um two thousand fourteen. This is their letter. Um, this is from Peaceful Dally Donkey Rescue. The pictures of what happens at donkey basketball. These are my adorable donkeys, Dilly and Dally. I am walking them in um a cul-de-sac by my neighbor, well, by my street. Um. Here's them again in their area. They love to be together. And if this doesn't sell you, this is Dilly laying her head on her mom's back. This is as much weight as they should have on their back. Thank you for your time and I will also go to the Oregon Trail School District to give them my opinions. Thank you.
And thank you, Holly. And um and of course, we're all leaders here in this community, so it makes sense for you to testify to us as your Sandy City Council. But it is a good reminder that Oregon Trail School District is the one that kind of oversees that property and what happens there. So would be a great place to go and testify to those folks. Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. Um, with that, um, we will move ahead to our consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from April one, twenty twenty four. The contract approval for the revised wholesale water agreement with the city of Portland and the contract approval for the transit technology implementation project. It sounds like Council Walker has a question.
He's had one question on the um water rates for um being charged. They seem, you know, and I read the paper the other day with the huge cost increase that Portland has for their system. So I I, you know, maybe that's the answer, but in twenty twenty eight, twenty nine, um, it goes from two dollars, you know, two point five four six per hundred thousand gallons or something to the next year it goes to four twenty nine, which is almost doubling. I'm just curious, is there any clarify in just kind of why it would almost go up so high in just one year?
Well, if I'm, if I'm in the staff report, if I may clarify, um, it is two point five four in fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine. And then in fiscal year thirty three, thirty four, it goes to four point seven.
Right, but at you're on your uh full run, what what is it? The um, the rate sheet that you gave, that you handed out?
So what this new wholesale agreement does is it follows the A W W A's ability to capitalize on projects. So they're starting on building the treatment facility, which when we get there and connect to, we will owe our portion of that plant. So what you see, the rapid rising is they start capitalizing the money spent every year to build the the billion dollar plant. So that's, that's the rise you see and then it, then it holds.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of goes up and then it goes like between twenty eight and twenty, twenty nine and thirty, it goes like up almost double and then kind of continues to rise. And I was just wondering, you know, it seemed like a gradual rise would be more.
It's, it's when the construction dollars finish and then that gets passed out among.
So it's the initial step function and then it, then it's more trendy.
It is. All right. That's, that was my question. That's the answer. Yeah.
All right. Unless there's further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Make motion to adopt the consent agenda.
For a second.
I'll say it.
Motion by Councilor Hopkinson, a second by Councilor Maiden to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays? Motion carries.
Can I submit a statement, please? Thank you for the negotiation. Spent a lot of the work and it seems kind of almost, almost like soft pedaling it. When we put it in the consent agenda, talk about, you know, the months and and you and our consultant and getting that negotiated. It's a very, very good deal for Sandy and if anybody wants to look at the uh included presentation. There's the benefits. That's a really good single slide to talk about why this is a good deal for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right. Moving ahead to resolutions, uh city council now resume public hearing on resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, which has been continued from our March uh eighteenth, twenty twenty four council meeting. I will now call for any new abstentions from the hearing body. I will call for any new conflicts of interest from that hearing body. All right, staff. Um, um, oh, I'm supposed to ask you, is there new written testimony? I guess there's been new written testimony submitted since March eighteenth into the public hearing?
Yes.
Or has there been?
There were two exhibits, so they're both in the pack in there.
That's correct. Thank you. All right. With that, let's get the staff report. Timmy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on February fifth and again on March fourth, city council considered formation of an advanced finance reimbursement district to cover, recover a portion of funds invested to build three sixty second in Bell. After careful consideration, council directed staff to bring a resolution to council with the following elements. A valuation of two million, four hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty five dollars, which is twenty percent of the street funded portion of the project. The city is not asking for reimbursement from the sewer or water funded portions. A reimbursement methodology using developable area, an interest rate of five percent and a reimbursement term of twenty years. As stated by the mayor on March eighteenth, um, the city was asked for a continuance of the meeting so the affected landowners could have time to further study um the effects of the A F D on them. Um, in the intervening period, city staff has met with or answered questions and reached out to all affected property owners at that time. Um, we do have two clarifications to public testimony that was given March eighteenth. Um, the first one, there was a clarification about would this affect a property owner doing routine maintenance of their property? There was mention of a damaged barn. Our city manager stated that was certainly not in the spirit of this. And since that time, we have clarified, AJ has worked with council, to clarify the resolution stating that this is really intended for redevelopment, not maintenance of your property, number one. There was also some confusion about the interest rate accruing. There is no payment due by property owners at any time, every year. It's not like a tax. This only affects them if they develop or redevelop their property and it's due at such times they come in um to the planning department. So with that, um, we have had two written testimonies in the intervening period. Um, one was for, um, one asked for consideration for this to be changed to a ten year term or a ten percent instead of a twenty percent. And in summary, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty twenty four zero eight.
Thank you, staff. And with that, we'll move ahead for the additional public testimony. Here's the guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition as someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that wish to have, that you wish to have considered by the council, they must formally be placed into the recording of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder at ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, use the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, please dial star nine in order to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call on each person when it is your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to five minutes to testify and our city recorder Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our city council rules do require that each person state their name and address for the record. I will now call for testimony on the proposed resolution. You will have five minutes each and this would be the moment to raise your hand, either in person or electronically. Ms. Linda, please.
Why don't you go first if you want?
Okay.
And there are only two of us? Yeah, two, two so far.
Just not raising your hand yet. Linda Malone, one seven seven four zero Bluff Road. And I want to start by saying just because I've been around for longer than dirt, that I'm really pleased that the council was able to get this through with grants and with loans and with money from our street fund. This has been a long wanted north-south connection for the city and so I'm pleased that it happened. And I'm glad that it's there as an alternative for people from the high school or from the city. And being that I live on Bluff Road, it does cut down a little bit on the traffic that goes by the front of my house. Although that's not why, because we sit far enough back that I don't even hear the traffic, especially as I'm getting older. But I do think that it's only fair and fair to the community and to the citizens who won't reap as big a benefit financially as the adjacent properties owners will. I'm glad that we didn't have to go through eminent domain to get the land to make the road, that they, you know, were able, we were able to purchase that land from the adjacent property owner in order to complete the extension of Bell Street and three sixty second to make that north-south connectivity. But I do want to state that I think the twenty percent AFD is the minimum that should be assessed, that will at some point in time bring the, the street fund back to somewhat whole status, even if it's not for twenty years. The only thing I would find different would be that I, I think the five percent interest should start accruing when the property either redevelops, if someone comes in to develop it, or if it's sold. Because otherwise that, that starts building up and it could cause the person who owns land who doesn't want to sell, who wants to live there forever, feel forced to sell. And I don't think that that's the goal of the council or the city to force people into the position of selling to redevelop. And we also know that redevelopment is not going to happen real quick because we do still have a sewer more torn, don't we? A building more torn because of the sewer treatment plant. So if we use this as impetus to solve that problem and maybe encourage people who want to sell their land and get it redeveloped or redevelop themselves. Soon as they do that, the interest would start accruing and the city would end up be recouping what we paid for the road. So that would be the only change I would make. I would hope you would approve this measure. The twenty percent for twenty years and a five percent starting at the time that the land is either redeveloped or sold. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing, when did we get the huge monitors that make it so we can't see counselors faces?
Well, since we got, since we all got so unattractive.
I'm not in favor of the large monitors.
All right, others who wish to testify, please.
Uh, yeah, please.
Eric Lundin at three six four oh five Southeast Highway twenty six. And I almost don't know where to start. My first issue was, now, city acted as the GC on this project and there's, it was, I believe, in my opinion, it was, some of it was mismanaged. I mean, I've the design drawings, the beginning. I've got Mike Walker drawings here from two thousand eight that showed the alignment of the streets that we created sixteen years ago and why we ended up with extra engineering fees. I got the feeling from inside and outside the city hall here to that there should have been like a project manager on, on this to, to avoid a lot of these issues, to move it forward more, more economically. The other the division, that you guys had to come up with some kind of methodology and I realized that. But with the different sized lots and different zonings and there's no real equal way to have done it, I believe. Some, somebody's going to get it, get hit hard and it's square footage. At fifty nine cents, it's, I mean, obviously we're going to take the blunt of that. But to alleviate, alleviate some of that, I didn't recognize Linda at first here, but she was on this budget. These overages came up early on and then the, the new budget was started in twenty two. And you guys accepted it in twenty three. And the, the budget has this all, this overage all blended in to it already. And I know Jenny, you know, tried to dummy down some of that, but it still hit, hits the commercial properties hard. I mean, we, we don't have sewers and the waters figured in, but it's a big hit for us. The other thing us as landowners, we don't have the, well, we might have access to grants and loans and stuff the same as the city, but we don't, we're at this point, we're not capable to buy for all those. The city can keep, keep adding to that budget that they lost and I was talking with Carl that they didn't get a six million dollar grant that they applied for this legislators' year, but possibly in the next session, they can reapply and get some of that to, to blend this all in. This property, it's, it's our heritage. Gilbert bought it in eighteen ninety three from the California Railroad and it's been passed down through the family. It's changed names to my father, who was a John Drew descendant, so nineteen fifty six, when I was an infant, we moved back to the, to the homestead. And I just, I'm just, I just feel that maybe there's another way to cure this overage. I'm going to have to basically, when I market it, I'm going to, at some point, if we do get something going, it's, I'm going to have to almost add a surcharge to a developer and it, it just seems like there'd be a better way to alleviate this and do better way to promote development and have this hanging over everybody's back. And I realize we need the street. We still need a north-south. We still need three sixty second. The, the issues are still, still in place that came with this intimate domain takeover and we could have managed it better, I think. If we'd be a lot better off. Hopefully we can reduce some of this, these funds that you're trying to recoup or, or let them go away altogether and let's get it some other way with new development, our taxes. How many jobs we're going to bring?
Twenty seconds, Mr. Lund.
Okay. I pretty much got it covered. Jenny's done a great job. I've visited with her. She's got a handle on the fixes and I think she's got a great outlook on the future, so maybe we can blend this all in without hitting us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate them.
First of all, clarification, please. Was there eminent domain on this project?
With the Lundin property, we did have to go to court and we did something called a quick take and then we negotiated unsettled.
All right, yes, please.
I'm Doug Castle, one six two zero zero Bell Street Wind Tunnel.
What was that again?
Bell Street Wind. The January storm did a, did a number on the eastern properties on the Bell Street. The Advanced Finance Public Improvement District, Reimbursement District. I guess there's been around a dozen of those in Sandy. We couldn't think and maybe you can help me here, help us here. Were any of those districts composed of properties that were both commercial, residential, and actually two different kinds of residential? Commercial is the three larger properties. The residential, R two, is the three smaller properties. And my property, the third one, the eastern most, has a third zone on the east side creek. It's for single, single family residential. I'm thinking in my mind, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that those three zones are worth at least a little bit difference in money, or is it drastic? I'm not sure. And there's nothing in the reimbursement district that reflects that. The other one is the wetland constraint. As I looked over the figures, they look pretty good, except for when I looked at my property, the wetland constraint is three hundredths of an acre. Where the same stream runs into an adjacent property or from an adjacent property, it's six tenths of an acre. And the stream, same stream runs diagonally through my property. So I'm, I'm thinking it's got to be more. In fact, in two thousand eight, when Persimmon developers made an offer on our property, they came back later after investigating and said, we can't pay you for that stream and the setback. And in fact, when the city made the offer back in, I think, twenty twenty or twenty one for our property, the map they used showed almost two acres of setback for the stream. And as a consequence, our property was valued less per acre. And so we were offered a lot less per acre than what this setback would indicate. Does that make sense? AJ provided the map that, that they used for figuring the three hundreds. And when it comes onto our property, the stream is a little sliver. It looks like it's probably just the water without any setback. And I'm thinking in my mind, that can't be right. So if that could be investigated and researched, if in fact it's closer to the two acres, that is going to change the total acreage of the district. Not by much, but by enough to make a difference in the amount per acre. Not counting the different zoning. I think it should be, the zoning should be accounted for because it's going to sell differently. The third and last thing I wanted to say is, we talk about benefits of the, the road. We've lost privacy. We deal with a lot of noise, especially from seniors with their pickups that like to race away from the high school at two thirty.
Senior students.
Students, yeah.
A little fast.
We've all been there, right? We had a goat pass away after the goat ate Jimson weed, which I have never seen in Sandy. And it didn't just fall off the wheels of a truck. It was blown on to the, the slopes and the sides of the road and some in the middle. And those seeds can last up to a hundred years and be in the ground and come up spraying. Spraying does practically nothing to them. I spent last year several days going along the road picking those seed pods before they burst open because the seeds just go like that. So if you get a chance, look up Jimson weed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, others who wish to speak, please raise your hand, either electronically by doing the electronic raised hand button, telephone star nine, or physically here in person. Not seeing any raised hands online. Okay? All right, with that, I will call for the staff recap and recommendation.
Thank you. We do know this is a sensitive issue impacting property owners. We do also recognize that the building of the road, while it did improve connectivity and emergency access, it also will raise the prices of the affected property owners. And we also do say that this road was built at, or the AFD is being offered at an eighty percent discount of the true cost. I would also note that no staff time, including mine or Ryan's or any of the legal counsel which was required to obtain all of this right away, is included in the total cost of this project, which was twelve point nine four million. Many developers, as well as other cities, including Sandy, do do advanced finance reimbursement districts. So this reimbursement district will help rebuild the street operations fund, which is needed to maintain our roads throughout the city. And staff does recommend adoption of resolution twenty twenty four oh eight.
Thank you, Jenny. I will call for a motion to close the public hearing. Want to close the public hearing? Mr. Second.
I'll second.
There, there's a motion by Counselor Hunkinson, a second by Counselor Exter to close the public hearing. I'll close it at seven thirty one P M. Discussion by the hearing body.
Mayor, do we need a vote on that? I'm sorry. There was a
No, oh, there's a motion. There's a second. I just closed it, didn't I? All those, I don't have that kind of power. I wish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays. Motion carries. It's now closing at seven thirty two P M. All right, discussion.
I have a question for staff. One of the things that I think it was Mr. Castle brought up was the values of his property and the different zones and such. And to some degree, it does make sense to me that some of the values were would be different between a single family and a commercial and those sort of things, and especially if some of the property was unusable. Did we not consider those things in terms of the percentages of affected properties? Well, we did. I didn't think that.
They're, 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 oh, I'm sorry, Counselor, you done?
Go ahead.
So there, there were two different pieces of testimony. We did use calculations of the developable area, including setbacks for the stream and the wetlands. Um, we did use calculations of the developable area, including setbacks for the stream and the wetlands. AJ did check that, and so we can double-check again, but the G I S does show the width of the stream and the setback.
I'm looking at maps here. It shows a setback in riparied area identified, so I want to make sure that that was done. Seems like that would be logical.
It, it was done, yes. The different examples I've seen for A F R Ds consider how to apportion the value of the improvement. And so that is, so you look at the improvement and you do it based on the area or the street frontage, including another layer of the zoning. Wasn't seen in any of the examples we've seen. And so that, that wasn't considered, the different zoning.
So continuing Mr. Castle's uh question about the difference of the, the wetland area. He believes should have been excluded from the developable land versus staff report. Do you, can you help out for a comment as to whether the staff report's right?
What we are seeing, and, and I hate to be the guy that, you know, this will be out on the computing today, but. The calculations for all these properties were based on the wetland area from our G I S layer. They're based from the wetland area of our G I S layer, which I have in front of me. The discrepancy between the Miller property and the Castle property, it's just a much narrower strip of land over that creek there. And the reasons for that, we didn't develop these layers. I couldn't say why they are. The width they are, but that's what the development starts, or for what was removed from each of the property areas, developable property areas.
Eddie, I'm ready.
Well, well, I mean, I, well, I wanted to go a couple, a, a different track. I just wanted to see if there's any more questions on that Castle's property before I went there. I wanted to um weigh the five percent interest uh that starts.
I have a thought on that.
Yeah, yeah, about that. All right, yeah, I just wanted to scratch the surface of that a little bit and talk about it.
So. Our motivation for, our motivation is too full for Bell Street and this district. One is. Bell Street is built for those three purposes, right, and if I want, which is to make the property develop, right? And. To, to that end, if we overcharge with too high of an interest or we start that interest too soon. At some point, it be, could become a barrier to that.
Totally, and yet it hasn't offloaded for a reason during that time, you'd think.
Right, so, so I think we're not putting the interest on there because we want to make more money. It's more to incentivize the ultimate sale. So it seems to me deferring, delaying the start of interest for a year or two. Might be prudent. And we don't lose anything, right? The whole point is help those folks who are ready to develop to develop.
I sure as heck don't like the interest from the moratoriums, right?
Well, that would maybe. I saw that problem as well. And, and while we're looking at those things too, the other side of this is. Twenty years is a long time. I know we talked about it. We kind of said twenty years, but the reality is if the property hasn't sold, had been redeveloped in eighteen years from now. We missed.
Right, do you want to miss?
I don't want to miss.
Yeah, I don't either.
So maybe the term, maybe a shorter term, maybe delaying the interest a little bit. But I, that, that's, that's where I'm feeling there might be some of them. I, I agree, especially with the, with Don, but especially with the moratorium piece. Um, I, I think that's a. It's unfair burden. That's not their fault, uh, that we have this issue. I'm uh, I am for the uh, the district itself, and I think that the, that some of the recruitment cost needs to be done. But I also don't see the need to unfairly burden the property owners when they're not even able to develop that, thus the property is even less. Right, desirable for right now, so. Um, I, I at least would say um that it wouldn't start until they can actually develop that property, which it would be fair. Um, one other thing, I just real quick, I just want to give it out there. Um, and I know the answer, I just wanted to kind of go on the record. Were there any grants that we obtained to build this road?
There were not.
So this is one hundred percent City of Sandy funded?
We were very nervous in February and March of twenty twenty-two. Uh, just with the way prices were going, and so Tyler and Jeff and Jordan applied for a raise grant for. Five million, I think.
Four and change.
Yeah, and, and we found out later this summer, we didn't get it, but we were very relieved when we opened up, you know, we had four bids. And the construction price was nine point three million, so. The project has stayed on track since twenty twenty-two, you know, when we got to the ninety percent, but no, there were no grants.
One hundred percent City of Sandy funded via S D C's general fund.
Still paying off and will be paying off how long? The full faith and credit bond.
The twenty-year.
Twenty years.
Eighteen more years of banking. Okay, one sec. Uh, you just, you've gone first. Is there others? Okay, please, Carl and then Kathleen.
So the whole piece of this is that we're trying to get this developed, not get the part about. It's a benefit for our citizens to go be more. Able to get through the, the school uh traffic, be able to have medical and emergency equipment, get there and back. And eventually develop uh to more the parts of the city as it grows and such. Uh, all that I accepted, and is part of the reason why we are only asking for twenty percent of the reimbursement, because. Even though I, I'm not sure I can defend eighty percent of it as part of the. The city's benefit rather than the individual owner's benefit, but I, I do think we need to find a way to encourage. Development out there. In the long run, what will really make the city money is having commercial properties on these lots. And single families and so on. The taxes and the reimbursements, the fees that are going to be provided. Really will overwhelm everything, and maybe the twenty years is a bit long to expect, so if we have. Empty property um fifteen years from now, we've really lost opportunity. We've also bought, done what we want to do. So to me, uh, makes sense about the moratorium. That makes a lot of sense. It's not their fault. So in, in my mind, I'm not sure that I would go much beyond the twenty percent, but the twenty percent sounds pretty good. And uh, with the modification of the moratorium, I think that makes some sense to it. I, I really want something out there. I really want to see a. Building of some kind on this. And uh, it seems that twenty percent reimbursement gets us in a lot of that category.
Right, thank you, Kathleen.
Um, there was some mention about waiving the five percent till the development happens, at which point. That's, I mean, then you don't make any interest. Cause then it's all right, so that's, so. The whole purpose for the five percent was to cover the costs of what that money would make if it was banked or something like that. Um, the, and, and, and the concern I have is that, you know, the longer it, it doesn't uh get developed. Um, our, that money's not going into our uh operations and maintenance fund that we need to refund, so that's a concern. I understand that we've gotten some uh. Good news on the whole, you know, how many units we're going to get from, and I don't want to talk about that because it's off topic, but. I could see kind of uh, like you all talked about, giving a little bit of a waiver till the. Moratorium ends, I think there's. Potential for. I, I guess I'm a little concerned about the specific specifics of that, because if we get a waiver for all of our pipeline. Um, but all our pipeline doesn't develop, you know, that they have a year, they get so much time to develop under their existing proposals. And we've been giving them extensions, and then once we kind of get that. The pipeline, you know, permitted, then we should be giving them a one-year extension and then. And then, you know, then they need to develop or, or not, but if they don't develop, then we should be able to be giving those. E R U's or whatever to uh something like this, I would hope, if we transfer those E R U's to this and give them the opportunity. So when there's the opportunity to get the uh, get E R U's to this place, I could see then, you know, delaying it to that point. I don't know if that's, if that's the point where the moratorium goes off or not, but when there's an opportunity to provide them some E R U's for development is when I would like to. I, I could agree with that. I totally, you know, the, the reality is, is we've got a twenty-year loan. We're going to be paying for this for twenty years, so. Um, I'm really feeling like, you know, twenty years is, you know, what we need because. Again, if it doesn't, you know, we need the twenty years because this money is just going to refund our operations fund. And if we don't get it in ten years, we're not getting it at all. We've already given them more than eighty percent of the cost of this project, so. Just grabbing back twenty percent of the project is, in my mind, a huge gift to the landowners and. You know, and well worth it to the city and, you know, a win-win for everybody, but I'm not looking at going anything less than, I mean, I wanted more than twenty percent. I'll be real honest, and I'm also feeling like the five percent is needed to try to. Cover the cost once the moratorium is, is uh passed.
Kind of, I, I see, it looked like you were wanting it.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of, of notes about when the moratorium ends, and I think just for a point of clarification, and we can split all this with um. Our city attorney too, if we need to, but I think it, maybe some better language around that would be at the time in which development applications can be accepted or something, because we don't know. The definition of moratorium could mean different things, and we don't know what version or what, what iteration of the moratorium we're going to be in at any point in time, so. Uh, I just want to be careful about the specificity of that language that we use, because it, it could change very easily.
Chris, make a short statement, ask a clarifying question, and then continue my statements. First is I absolutely think three sixty-second and Bell was much needed for the community. Say that, and then my question for you, Jenny, is, as I've been told, and as I went out and walked across the street. The lanes are not wide enough today for two cars. So if cars are backed up and parked down three sixty-second, an emergency vehicle could not go by them if they wanted to. Is that an accurate statement?
Are you referring to three sixty-second or Bell?
Three sixty-second.
It's three sixty-seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bell.
Oh, okay. That is true, yes.
So that, that's my question. So with that, I think there's an easier way to say this. Instead of worrying about moratoriums and worrying about the, the disadvantage, I think. Carl's comment about emergency vehicle access has just been answered. We don't have it. So when we develop those properties, we're going to have to do something about increasing the road size. Because we're going to have even more traffic on those roads, which we're going to ask the developers to do, because that's what we do. For improvements when they take over the properties. The second piece is what Don mentioned about pricing ourselves out of the market. If we add this to the property owners today. Then the property owners are going to add it to the sale of their price, which is going to add it to the developer, who's then going to add the increased S D C's that they've gotten. That we've approved, and they're eventually going to build something that the customer can't afford, and they're going to price us out of the market. And then we're going to have buildings sitting vacant, because people can't afford the apartments that they're putting in today. At the rent rates that they're offering today, much less than two years from now. So it, so in my opinion, increased S D C's, lane size, pricing ourselves out of the market. I'm pulling back my vote on this, and I'm voting no, because it's not going to be healthy for us. Now, I understand that by voting no. It doesn't replenish Jenny's operational fund. I think the increased S D C's is going to do that, as we continue to allow builders to build, as we continue to negotiate. Connections to our sewer pipe, that we can allow building, it's, and we're already those. Those high rates we've already set in place for S D C's are going to help us recoup some of that money, and we have to do a better job, and I agree. I wasn't here when we did the S, when we did three sixty-second and Bell, so I wasn't part of that research. But I, I do agree that I think that the road isn't set up the most efficient way today, because it doesn't have the width that it needs to. To allow emergency vehicles, much less added traffic when you build a bunch of. Retail and commercial and, and residential space down that, down that strip, traffic's going to triple. And it's not going to happen, so I'm, I'm voting no, so I just want the group to know that.
Can I ask Clarston?
Sure, sure. So I think you're conflating S D C's with the street fund, and they have different purposes, so this. Reimburses the street fund, S D C's are paying for, for new construction.
I told you I wasn't confusing, because I told you that doesn't address the operational issues for reversing that fund.
New S D C's don't help the street fund.
But that's not.
For new capacity, I think, it can go, S D C's can go towards new capacity.
New capacity.
Not, not current.
But they can't, they can't do anything to the street operations fund at all.
Thank you.
Clarification, the, the right-of-way that we purchased for these roads, does it include additional space for additional lanes? So that, because I understood that the problems with this project was, we had to. Pull from all kinds of different resources to make this thing happen, just the way it is. Uh, I, so the question is, is do we have the ability to widen those lanes or add a lane on either side? In the future, where are we to get money?
I would have to get back to you on that. I, I don't know.
And why are we talking about this? It's not part of the, this discussion.
No, but it, what it does is, it, like, there's appears to be some con, concern about if you got a car parked there and. On Bell, I guess I, I haven't measured it, but it seems to me that that's.
Like, that's taken our eye off the ball.
That's a little bit. It, it is a frustration. Well, I'll tell you it's a frustration with our code, because, you know, if they didn't have those center medians. A emergency vehicle could make it down, right? That's the truth.
I, I completely agree with, with the points.
I understood, yeah, I understood, that's. Carl, I'm sorry, I just wanted you to be able to finish your thought.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm finished there. Although I am not against the center gardens at all, there's our, for environmental purposes, so.
So, so unlike Chris, I, I have been on council long enough, and, and we had deemed, you know, this was our council goal, getting this road in was like. High, high, high top priority. For all of these reasons, I'm on our own Sandy Speaks website, relieving chronic traffic bottleneck. Economic development, providing access to schools and promoting resiliency. So there's explanations of what each of those things mean and, and what we intended with that. Um, I am under the understanding, again, according to the site, that this has been part of the transportation projects since nineteen ninety-four. But I actually think it's been on the city project list since nineteen forty. So. This is, this has been a longtime goal of the city. So we have project funding that we've used and, and, you know, from vehicle registration fees to our fuel tax and whatnot. And nowhere in anything that we've discussed with the public with this road has this reimbursement district been part of the conversation. Until now. And so to me, this negatively affects future development, it negatively affects the current property owners. And so like Chris, I will also be at no vote.
Yeah, rest, but. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, what is the interest on our, our bond or?
I can get that for you in thirty seconds.
While you do that, uh, I just have a question for, you know, my fellow counselors up here, and that is that. Uh, we depleted our street fund by two million dollars, over two million dollars. And I, I'm all for figuring out something else, and I, and I, and I don't. I, I'm one hundred percent, but I haven't heard any ideas of how we're going to punish that. S D C's isn't it? And that is literally putting it on the back of everybody that doesn't use. Um, and that's putting it on the citizens that are here. When yet, if this would have developed naturally, development truly would have paid for itself, the developers would have been on the cost for this pool. Well, that's just today's money too. Who knows what it would look like five, ten, fifteen years down the road, however long, but, you know, almost thirteen million dollars today. So, and, and six hundred thousand dollars is currently budgeted uh from the general fund on top of that. So I, I'm all for this, like, and, and another idea, I just haven't heard an idea, nor do I have one. Of a better way to replenish our fund and not make it so that we can't repair the streets for every other citizen it's in. Until there's a better idea, I, I just don't know it.
I'm hoping for a weekend session to come up with something. I feel like I'm too new to to give full depth of this, but I would love to sit and collaborate about other ways we can find money to reimburse.
That's it.
Yeah.
It's like our only avenue that we have to replenish that fund, reimbursement districts and and gas taxes.
We we can't do it with SDCs, look, I don't think it's, I I wish there was something else we could do. And I wanna see it develop too, but my gosh, eighty percent that we paid, the citizens have already paid six hundred thousand dollars. Of their tax dollars towards this. On top of our street fund that's already out there as well, like, we, there's no better, there's no other way to do that. Now, if we wanna have a discussion about raising our tax, our gas tax and that, fine, but talk about political ramen. Talk about community outcry over that, it's gonna be much more than an AFRD.
Well, I mean, I I live in the community, I pay I pay those rates, I pay those taxes, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, I would not have. I would not have voted as a citizen to spend the money if we didn't have the money to do it. But as a citizen, I would also have made a selective choice to say, I wanna invest in this property. By spending this money to bring more business here, that's not on my back, that's on that's on on us as a as a council. And that's what this council did, is it made, it laid its hand down and said, I wanna pay this money on our own for this road. And we're gonna bring developers in. We didn't talk about having developers pay for it then, we're we're talking about it now.
So we did to the two to ten million dollars though, we paid ten million dollars for the developer.
We invested in ourselves.
That's absolutely agree.
We did not invest in ourselves, cuz we never get it back.
We paid.
But we did not invest.
That's an investment.
No, that's a loss. Okay, fair, fair, we'll we'll call it what it is. Yeah, I can say exactly, exactly, I see both sides of that. But this is still a ten million dollars that we, well, when I say we, that the city has come up with. And all we're asking is for two million of that back, and there is no way that that wouldn't have been paid for had we not. Let it develop naturally, it would be one hundred percent on the back of the developers and thus the property owners and everything else. I I'm all for trying to help it out, and I want this to develop, and I love the idea of where I think it's gonna hopefully go someday. But I just, we can't, like, what we are, what I'm hearing right now from some of people is this is going one hundred percent on the back of our sandy citizens. And that's not right. That's just my view, I'll hold it quiet. Sorry, I have a little passion.
I just wanna briefly answer your question that you asked, um councillor Sheldon, so interest rate currently on the uh bond for that project is four percent. We earned five and a quarter on our investment account, that's why the interest rate on the um AFRD was proposed at five percent. Cuz two months ago when this was drafted, it was at five percent. And then lastly, just to um. Uh reiterate, one of the existing city council goals is to replenish the street fund to support future maintenance activities. And so this was one of those approaches to replenish the street fund, just wanna make sure we.
So we get, we get one point seven nine dollars a year in gas tax, is that correct? That's a figure.
No, I think that is a biennium number that you just referenced, but I may pull it.
And while this, just while you're looking that up, there's two allocations, right? There's ours on city gas tax, and then there's our allocation from the state that we get on.
Yeah, so jointly between both of those sources, we get, we have two point four million budgeted for the biennium, so about one point two million per year.
Okay, but so my my point is, is that that is being, that that fund is being reestablished annually, that's my point.
It's being reestablished annually, but you know, you've got somewhere in the ballpark of six eight hundred thousand a biennium that goes to street sweeping alone. And street, you know, general to street cleaning and maintenance, the staff associated with um all of our public works and and street components. Street utility fees, um as well as just general street fund, maintenance, asphalt.
And the 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 project as well, the annual, the PMI.
I would just say from a funding perspective, um the street fund, especially given the direction with hybrid and electric vehicles going forward. And the likely reduction in gas tax is going to face a serious budgetary issue over the next decade. And not just Sandy Street Fund, but.
And not that this is, not that this is a popular comment, but it is in reality, I think, is. We could put our our general, general fund up, nothing stops us from putting general funds.
No, you can put general fund dollars where you want to.
Yeah, yeah, we're, I know, and it's not popular, like I said, but we're asking what we can do.
We've already moved, we've already put six hundred.
Understood, I'm not, again, we're asking what we can do, where we can move around.
And I just have an unpopular question, so don't bash me.
Kathleen's in the pipeline.
What what does one penny raise on our gas tax for the city, agreed to in dollars?
We would get, you want an annual or a biennial number? Annual number, if we increased a penny, we'd get another hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, for starters, um when I first got on council and I was aware of this project, I raised the questions. About how do we get some of the costs for this reimbursed to the city? Because I felt like, you know, it's a great project, definitely start spur the development and all that. But I was, you know, asking about what are the tools, and that's how we learned about the AFRD, so that's been on the genus since I've been on city council. So this isn't the first time we're hearing about it, I don't know about for you, but I've been speaking about. Right, and so so the other part of that, though, is that, again, to kind of echo some, what Rich said is that. Were we not to build this, the developers would have to bu- build it, and you would have, the the landowners would have gotten even much less for their land. Because the cost would have been much more, and they would have had to have that taken out of how much they get for their land. So we paid ten million, and actually, we paid more because of all Jenny and Mike Walker's, you know, staff time, that that. Don't know how much that was, but you know, it's been years working on it, major project. I feel like we've got the people who who benefit in this room from this largess, basically ten million dollars. But we don't have the rest of this, the residences, and I purposely didn't go out and make this a big deal about like, hey, this is what we're deciding. I feel like if we're really talking about not passing this, it is going, you know, I I hear these comments about the conditions of our roads. And I feel like that that, you know. I was suggesting more than twenty percent, but I can agree with twenty percent, but I feel like that's the bottom line for me. And we need to be start telling you the rest of the residents who are on the hook for that and and not going to see the snow plowing and the. Patch, pothole patching and all the other stuff that we need to pay for those kind of things. We're saying that, no, you can't have that because we're giving all the money, including the two point four million dollars to these developers. And I don't, I don't wanna go on the record as that, and and I and I think if that's what we're talking about doing. We need to have a a much better PR, you know, uh we need to get that out to in our in our sandy source and everything else. So that people can kind of weigh in on that, because that's being transparent. We're saying that two point four million dollars is coming out of everybody's pocket for their streets and that they're paying for. And I don't agree with that, I think it needs to be coming out of this, I think this is the least we could have done. So I'm really frustrated and concerned that, you know, we, my whole thing that I ran on was that developers need to pay for their development. That's what I heard from all the the residents that I got votes from, was that they felt like developers should be paying more instead of sticking it to us, to the residents. So I I'm gonna be.
I agree with you councillor Walker, let's ex- let's extend this out, let's not do it today, let's let's push it out, let's talk about it more, let's be more transparent, let's bring the people in. Let's hear their word, let's hear their voice.
Let's go, Carl, Carl's next, everybody take a deep breather, deep breather, and then we're gonna go to Carl and and then we're gonna go to Don.
Yeah, a a couple of things, um the unfortunate business about being here long enough that you've seen some of these things. Come back through again and again, and we have talked about a reimbursement district. You you may not remember, you may not um know about it, but we did talk about it as part of the process of building three sixty second bill. It it didn't really come to fruition until finally we get the road into place, and now we have, what are we gonna do to pay for? I think that's something that has to be thought through a little bit. And secondly, the citizens of this community, this had been sitting since, I don't know, maybe nineteen forty. I would not have inborn in nineteen forty, unfortunately. Not true, but that is. But it has been a desire of the city for a long time, since I've been here, which is the mid eighties. And I know that's not as old as some folks have been, but it has been a desire by the citizens, and it has been something that. I think the citizens look at as a positiveness to the city. And and I also agree with Kathleen in that it is a benefit to the people who the road goes through. It's gotta be something that's an advantage for the selling of those properties, the developing of those properties. Other cities can be, other cities have done this thing and have done it in format that we are proposing for it, and have developed their properties. And it isn't been that much of a prohibitive monies to be able to get forward on it. I would love to see it be zero, I I would love to say we'll just pay for the whole thing out of the city, but I don't see how. Was it like six, seven years ago, we tried to make a, I think it was a three cent tax increase on taxes. And we got voted down, I, it's like seventy percent, I think, it wasn't close. So if you wanna try that, I I think it's gonna have to be a big sale, um I'm not saying that it's begun now. Uh there were things we didn't do in those days, but uh it it's a tough sell. Uh and then lastly, I think we just do need to be able to find some way to get, uh I I'm aware of sidewalks and potholes. And places that we've said no to, because we just don't have the money in our accounts for years now. And and it's been a few years, cuz we've been putting that aside, three sixty second and Bell. So I I think we do need to get some reimbursement, minimal, though it may be some. So I I'm I'm prob- I'm gonna be voting yes.
We're gonna shoot to, well, it depends what's the motion, right? Let's go to Don, and then I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment to weigh in as well.
Okay, so. When when we got elected, the Rich and Kathleen and I came on council three and a half years ago, the Bell Street project was already well underway. Several, myself, Kathleen weren't real happy with the project, we inherited it. Um probably wouldn't have voted for it had that, you know, happened later rather than before. But it was a part of council, we supported it, it needed to happen, and and sometimes you just have to swallow the bitter pill. And you you know, you move on, and so that's great, but then we have the cost overruns, and they hit, and they hit, and what do we do? We faithfully vote for them, because now we're into it, what are we gonna do, stop the project, you know, because. Because we we run out of money, we had conversations about how to recover that money back then. And we kind of punted it, well, this is that day, we're the here now, where back then, we said yes. We're gonna build that road, but now's the time to come back to that and now figure out why. Why every man, woman and child in Sandy should have paid a thousand dollars, cuz that's roughly what it cost to build that road. Every man, woman and child in the city, and all we're asking back from not these homeowners, not these landowners. But the people they ultimately sell the property to, if and when they choose to sell it, those developers, that's who we're asking to reimburse. Two hundred dollars for every man, woman and child. That's that's the, that's how the numbers come out, and so if we don't do this, then that's other money we have to raise. Through mechanisms we don't even know, can't even come up with. Or what we really do is just punt more maintenance, so that our roads, ten years down the road or twenty years down the road. Will be facing the same thing as our sewer system, because we didn't do the maintenance at the time we should have. We have to have the money to maintain it, this is very important to us. I feel like Kathleen, twenty percent is the minimum, we should have gone more, but. That competing objective of keeping that property marketable, that's important, and I think twenty percent is all right. And I think councillor Mayton, I think you misrepresented the compounding factor, and maybe you didn't mean to, and maybe I just misheard it. But it's, it gets tacked on once to whoever comes forward with that land application. At that point in time, that cost, and the biggest chunk is the three six four oh five, one point four million, that's a big chunk, but that's the biggest property.
How is it, how is it once councillor, because if you build a road, you create an increased value for the current property owner. So the increased value for the current property owner, they then sell it at a higher rate to the developer, so that's that's cost increase one. And then the developer comes in, and they've got a high SDC, and then they've got this this AFD or the, I have the wrong acronym. Then you have, then you increase it again, it it's a, it's a compounding factor that will increase whatever they build. And again, I'm I'm not arguing the semantics on where the money's gonna come from, cuz I honestly don't know, but I'm I'm.
So let me, let me throw up, so you're, it's a fair question, so it's, the compounding is that the property value without a road had a certain value. We build a road, that value goes up.
Correct.
We never had, and commercial appraisals have been talked about are highly.
And your developer doesn't have to build the road anymore either.
Developer doesn't have to build it, so any developer coming in would have to build that, and if a developer came in, as has been explained. If when uh Mr. Lundin sells it, somebody comes in and develops that large piece of property, that developer builds the majority of that road. He's going to put in a reimbursement district for whoever comes after to help reimburse him for that road. That's all we did, we're the developer. In that case, so. To kind of bring this home. None of this affects the landowners that are sitting here today. It will affect their heirs or how they sell it, or potentially how it gets marketed. But when we look at the value of that likely property to a big box store or those other kinds of things that come in. The amount of money we're tagging on here is not going to prohibit that sale or make that not attractive to that future developer. That's, and that's something we talked about in our work session, that's why we landed on this percentage. So I I think this is, we gotta do this, we gotta do it for Sandy and for the future, and that that's where I'll I'll leave it.
Clarification question too.
All right, I'd love to get in here at some point.
I just want one question, for paying back the loan that we have, the five point six million, is that coming out of SDCs or our street fund?
We bonded against the vehicle registration fee, and so it's it's the capital department of the street fund. Which is comprised of vehicle registration fees, SDCs.
So that's our street maintenance.
It's operations, yes, yeah.
Well, okay, so now before I go, I just, I need to ask a clarification on that, okay? So what you're saying, we we didn't bond against all the vehicle registration fee and all the gas tax money.
Not gas tax.
Uh I mean, uh but the uh the money coming off of the the transportation bill that went. We bond, we bonded off the increase, so we bonded off of the new, the increase in the vehicle registration fee. We bonded off the, cuz you can only get, you can only bond off new revenue, new consistent revenue.
Correct, so there was a, wasn't there, there was not a vehicle registration fee.
Or there was, but they had raised it.
And then it changed the distribution of how those funds.
Right.
Were distributed, we weren't receiving vehicle registration dollars.
Right, so okay, so that's where I'm going. So we've had all this conversation about the street fund and raiding the street fund. We didn't raid the the existing street fund, we so-called bonded against future money. That was increased and coming in newly in the street fund.
For that bond, yes, that's separate from the two point four, I don't have the number in front of me. That supplemented the overall.
Out of the street fund?
That was out of the.
Okay, okay, but I just wanna make sure we're all very clear on where it's coming from, all right, on to it. Okay, AFRD, um first is is uh not opposed to AFRDs, very much for AFRDs. Uh it's a re- it's the way before half the council was on council. The old council was voting to pay for Gunderson Road and other projects was through the establishment. Of these advanced finance reimbursement districts, now, why do I like them? I like them because they take road projects and projects that might not come online, because we're waiting for the development. And we can now put it online and bid it against the future development that's coming to help pay for it. So Gunderson Road, we were able to start the construction, we got the new. We got the new development in there that helped offset some of the costs for that. And we sit in a better place today. Man, as been talked about here, we have been waiting for Bell Street, three sixty second in this community for a really long time. And so to do it, we did, we invested. And we built, we, we paid to build that and we had conversations to Don's point all along the way about an advanced reimbursement district to help offset some of that investment. Because we were getting far ahead of ourselves for being able to invest in this. But why did we do it? We knew it impacted a huge portion of our community. We had a huge trunk of properties on the west side of town. We wanted to see come online and development for the future of our community. We want to see them develop for our neighbors, for the property owners and for our budget. And to get the, all the money we're talking about flowing into these budgets to get those to develop and to get the money in. Now, all of that said, there's a lot that's happened since I got elected mayor, since this was a big priority of mine and others. Since we started talking about the reimbursement district, COVID nineteen happened and the closures and the pandemic happened and inflation happened and all these cost overruns. And, and the moratorium happened. And we've just had a lot of conversations going on about development in our community and how hard it's going to be able to be able to develop in this community, the timing of things being able to develop. And I sit in a place as mayor where I'm really nervous about these properties that I want to see come online, about the time that they're gonna be able to develop. And if they don't develop, what it means for our future budgets and being able to get those tax dollars in. As I hear the debate and I weigh these factors, I'm just gonna land on a couple of things. I'm gonna kind of lay things out as I see them from this discussion. Because I think there's several ways the council can go, some of which are gonna bring me along, some of which you may leave me in the dust. But as we make our motions, I want to lay out where I can go and where I can't go and, and where I see it. Okay? As I see conversations, I think you probably could get to four votes to table this motion. Okay? I think it's probably a four, three vote to table this motion tonight. With me, we can, you can get my vote. You may not need my vote for this. But with me, you can get my vote at ten percent and with no five percent interest accumulation at the twenty years. You lose me at twenty percent at starting the five percent. You, you lose me on that vote. Okay? I think you could, I don't know, again, for anyone, you could probably get this thing past the twenty percent without my vote. But if you want my vote and the mayor's support, you're at ten percent, five percent and not doing the five percent. So yeah, I think we could table it. You could go, someone making a motion to go for their twenty percent and maybe do it. I don't know. But I think you get really strong council support. And I think you, you probably start to get that unity factor you want at ten percent, getting rid of the five percent. Kathleen?
Well, if we're talking about tabling it and coming back to this, then it, the twenty percent is open for me and I'm looking at, you know, getting support in this community for more than twenty percent. Because I think there's a lot of residents who think twenty percent, we should have gone higher. So I would like to make a motion that we pass resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
Zero.
Number? Yeah, twenty twenty-four oh eight with the change of the language that you mentioned, Tyler, about the moratorium, the development opportunity.
When it starts.
Yeah.
Applications?
I would like to.
Josh, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight with the change of in language with the development opportunity timeline rather than the moratorium. Is that clear?
So you drop the five percent.
No, I have, just till the, till there's opportunity for development.
The term would still be twenty years?
Twenty percent, twenty years. And five percent, once there's opportunity for development.
And I'm not to be, I just want to clarify, that's what I mean when I say drop the five percent. I mean at, at that.
I'll second that. Just test that. For, make sure we got that figured out. So as described, but the moratorium scenario, twenty percent, no five percent until.
Till we accept applications.
And for twenty years.
And I'd say, and it's a second. And I would say, and we're in the discussion phase. Can I clarify something before?
Yeah, but we're in the discussion. Then I'll go to you. But, but I, I would say if this doesn't pass, is that you're probably likely to get another motion in front of you that's at the exact same term for the ten percent. So as people are weighing that, please, Chris.
I just want to clarify that I know we said when development applications are accepted, but I would like it to, just to be perfectly clear that development applications can be accepted for those specific properties. So I, I also kind of want to make it clear that we're kind of, we're kind of in a weird spot right now, but you know, there's, there's multiple properties out there. And so if one comes to be to fruition, you know, we all of a sudden get some P R Us and we can hook it up, right? But the other ones are not allowed to for whatever reason. I think that should play into effect as well. That's where I'm trying to go with that. That, I don't know how to word that language exactly, but does that make sense?
It does. I would love to take just a brief minute to have Josh jump in and make sure that some of the ideas that are being passed around. Past his legal.
But does that make sense to you guys?
I think I'm with you there.
So if, yeah, one property can develop, but the other one can't, I don't want the other one to get hammered until.
It's a feasibility question.
Yeah, I, I understand the, the question. I, I'm struggling to think of how the city is going to be able to define that in the resolution language because the, as you discussed previously, the moratorium is unlikely to be just a, a switch off. Right? And so there's not going to necessarily be a clear line where everybody on these properties is able to develop. I guess it, it, it may be a situation where we'll have to take this as direction from council to come up with some language and bring it back. I don't know that we're gonna be able to draft this on the fly.
It is, but it isn't. Please, Chris.
I just, since we're in the discussion phase and hearing your, your options, Mayor. I originally, when we started this, said I would, I would go for ten percent. And I, I listened to the arguments from those voting for it at twenty percent. And I, I do understand because I don't have the answers for how to solve the operational shortage that we need to get the money. And I'm, I'm, as a Sandy resident, longtime Sandy resident, I don't want to pay more money for it. And I, I do think developers pay fair share, in my opinion. I would absolutely vote for the ten percent in dropping five. Just making that known. I'm still a no at twenty.
Drop five at, at forever?
Drop five.
Drop five until.
Until it's sold or developed.
Or it develops.
And then you're essentially dropping.
So the motion.
So, but you have a motion at twenty percent. Okay. So we have a motion in front of us that we will do, conduct a roll call vote on. And to clarify the motion is that the motion is a twenty year term, twenty percent. And we're motion maker, what are we doing with five percent?
Well, is that, is the language that when the moratorium is ended?
Yeah, Josh, is it cleaner if the language, I'm gonna spitball here and you refine this with me, but at, at a point in time, which development applications can be accepted for these properties? And that's not as clear as Councillor Sheldon had indicated as far as when there's, you know, available ERUs or what happens to neighboring properties, but it's a, that, that's a more finite timeline, right? When development applications can be accepted, I think is something we can massage.
Right. So it, it was Councillor Sheldon's suggestion that I, I can't quite come up with a way to, to draft. A few clear line options would be, one, when the city begins to accept new land use applications. Another option would be when the city begins to accept new land use applications and has at least X ERUs available. That could be a way to get close to what Councillor Sheldon was asking about. You could say when the moratorium ends, but that doesn't seem to quite align with what the desire is here.
Okay. So would an amendment be that when the, do we have, we have an estimate of how many ERUs, full development of this parcel could, could have? Do we have that?
I think that's impossible to determine, just given the unknown of what could be built.
I think Josh provided the language though, right? When we're able to start a reopen for applications.
Begin to accept new land use applications.
Let's go with that.
Okay, okay.
But, but aren't we?
You can modify the motion.
No.
Um, I think what I could say, what I could say briefly to your point is that we will likely have availability with ERUs at some point in the future, but to ensure development of everything at this site, that's an impossible thing for us to determine because we don't know square footage of building, the use of the building, anything like that. So.
Would people feel okay with amending it to say that the five percent starts in year ten?
Is that an amendment to the motion?
What happens if it starts before that?
Five percent starts in year ten.
So Linda, the, the public hearing is closed.
I know. What I'm asking for are for the non-acronymic speakers out here, ERUs. If you could use less than acronyms and say.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah. Do you want to try, you want to do the.
Yeah, I, I can.
Oh, if we can even do it, Linda. ERU is a hook up.
Yes.
So it's your connection.
Equivalent.
Equivalent residential unit. So a single family home is an equivalent residential unit.
I know what it is.
Oh, oh, yeah.
But if you have a brewery, that might be like, it has to do with the load and the flow eventually that goes.
Water and sewer.
Exactly, exactly.
And we have a chart that we have to follow within the consent decree that we entered into with the Department of Justice. So it's very explicit as to what an ERU equates to.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to modify the motion.
Okay, yeah.
So I'd like to modify it so that instead of tying it to this other language, we just go start interest five years out after today. After the order is accepted, we start the interest five years. The other terms will remain the same, twenty percent for twenty years.
And you're assuming that in five years, we'll have a fair amount of ERUs that be able to move forward on that.
Council here at the time will rebalance.
Oh, well, now there's something.
Well, let's, let's just in place. You can't, you can't return to it. Oh, that's not my understanding. Josh, you want to speak to that?
I couldn't quite hear that question. There's a couple of people talking at once, I think.
amended an AFRD on, in the future?
Amended AFRD? Your, your code doesn't currently have, currently have a process tool to do that now.
So you're just set. So yes, Carl, to your point.
We're assuming that we are.
At five years, we fixed our problems or close enough.
Publicly, you and I've been on this advisory.
All right, well, that, so that's my motion. You got to, you're gonna have to make a decision on that, Carl.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm listening for the motion.
There's a motion. He needs a second. But we have a motion too, but I mean, in order of motions.
Okay.
Are, are you withdrawing your motion?
I'm. Well, I mean, part of me is like, you know, I could also just go along with eliminating the five percent to get the twenty percent. So.
So the options are withdrawn or seconded?
Or ten percent and eliminate.
I, I will, I will second it. I will withdraw my motion and second your motion.
Okay, that's fine. So now we have, so why don't you clarify your motion for the rest of council?
Alright, the motion.
The, the three elements of the terms, we would accept this AFRD with a twenty year term, twenty percent interest, interesting in five years after the acceptance of, for the beginning of the year for AFRD.
Not twenty percent interest, twenty percent.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Five percent interest, twenty year term, but the interest starts like this later.
Okay. All right. Unless there's further discussion, of course, Chris is, Chris is, well, there's a second one teed up, ready to go. With a second, but we've, we've got to place an order. So we have two motions in front of us. We're gonna vote on the first, then we're gonna vote on the second roll call vote. And to, we allow Don to do his. Do you want to clarify yours before we, before we go?
Mine would be a twenty year term at ten percent and eliminate the five percent until the property is developed or sold.
Okay?
I just want, what's twenty years at ten percent?
Half that amount of money.
So instead of a two point four million dollar AFRD, a one point two, one point two four million?
And just clarification.
But what's the twenty year if there's no, if there's no percentage, what's the, what's the twenty year?
Uh, yeah. So after the twenty years in this scenario, the district would just dissolve. If the property is sold or developed in twenty years and one day, they wouldn't pay anything for this project.
Thank you. What's the developed and sold part? How does that fit? Like, because the interest becomes payable when it comes to the land. So with interest.
I don't think it's accruing when it sells. From my understanding, maybe Jenny can clarify, it's, it's indifferent. As she said, I thought I heard her say that the five percent doesn't get applied until it's developed or sold. So it's irrelevant.
It, you did hear me say that, but I, I think it was taken out of context. I, I think one of the worries people had was they would owe, you know, every year they'd get a bill for five percent. But they don't. The five percent, a, a, as this was presented, would start accruing if this were passed tonight. Every year. So if a developer brought in a land use application a year from today, whatever the area would be, you tack on five percent and they would pay that when they paid their land use application.
And, and my suggesting was to not pay that at all until they actually take possession and build and develop the land. So there's no accrual of the five percent.
So there would be no interest.
So we're, so we're, okay?
So, so, so twenty years, ten percent, no interest.
Okay. Seconded by Laurie. First motion, Don's motion, Kathleen's motion, modified by Don, seconded by Kathleen. Roll call vote, Jeff.
Hey, Councillor Mayton.
Which one am I voting?
This is the first motion.
The first motion. No.
Councillor Smallwood?
No.
Councillor Sheldon?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Exner?
Yes.
Councillor Hockenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
No.
Mayor, that's four yeses and three noes.
All right, motion passes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Moving ahead on the agenda, we will, I gotta get ready to see what we can hear.
Thank you, Jenny. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the presentations just now. Thank you to everybody who came and held their by.
Thank you.
All right, moving ahead, Tyler, report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mind if I, yeah, just hold off a second?
Well, yeah, the question, actually. That's actually not true. Yeah, listen, actually, I would love a coffee over this topic. Seriously, I, I would do it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Good night.
Night, Doug.
She left. Back at four.
So did I. I don't know.
Maybe she did.
Is that a bag in the back also, Laurie, with that, to the right? Is there something in the far right?
It's a, it's a big bag.
That's our, that's our.
Oh, okay.
They're big things.
We lost them all.
No one wanted to stay for my exciting report, apparently.
We could leave too, if you want.
I'll be brief.
Okay, yeah, then I'll stick around.
So first thing I wanted to just inform you all of, there is, there was rather a planning the city's dinner scheduled for May second in Malala that has been canceled. I don't know if you got the email or not. I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's not going to be happening. I don't have further information other than they didn't have adequate attendees, I believe, is what was messaged to us. I haven't heard anything beyond. Um, message to us, I haven't heard anything beyond that.
Did you actually get me on the list this time, Jeff?
I did.
I meant I probably canceled it.
It might be, it might be.
Oh, so just.
That is kind of a bummer.
Yep.
Um, let's see, the SEI is due today, I don't know how many of you have completed, we can't see that on our end, who's done it and who hasn't. But a reminder, if you have not, please finish that up tonight.
Oh, I did it the first day.
Thrumking people.
I did it three days ago, I mean, yeah, right.
And then last but not least for me, um, you know, we've talked a lot about parks in the recent year or two, um, from. Uh, Cedar Park to existing parks to Deer Point Park. And one of the questions that Counselor Smallwood specifically has mentioned is, how are you gonna take care of them once you build them? Um, and so I just wanted to give a brief update on parks staffing and a plan that we have, um, that we're ready to put into motion. So the existing budget by name twenty-three, twenty-five did have an additional FTE budgeted for the last six months of the biennium, which would have been. Um, starting late December of this calendar year. We've done a lot of. Budget review and trying to um. Uh, you know, pinpoint exactly what the needs are for the Parks Department, what money we have available, and we do have. Um, the opportunity right now to transition our seasonal, um, summer position that we would have, bring that on as a full-time FTE. Uh, so about six months earlier than what was in the budget, but we have the funding available. The net difference is only about twenty-two thousand or so that we need to come up with, and we have that in the um, Parks Recreation Budget. So we're planning on moving forward with um, getting an addition, an additional full-time um, Parks Maintenance Worker that will, one. Do all the summer work that we already have to do and had a seasonal card out to do, um, we'll have an additional FTE onboard, um. For the late fall when we're setting up for Winter Fest and all of our. Post-summer activity, pre-winter things, um, and then it'll just slide right into the grand opening of Cedar Park when we're gonna need. Another body to help maintain those, um, you know, developed park acres that are over there. And then shortly after that, we'll have another park at Deer Point. Um, so this probably isn't the, the end of a discussion around Parks FTE, but I know it has been a, a point of. Question and concern as to how are we gonna maintain the assets that we do have, and so we do have this plan in place now that we're ready to. Move forward with. I see maybe a couple phases that I want to ask questions, I'm happy to take those or just. Uh, talk to you one-on-one later, whatever's convenient or comfortable.
Well, it's not gonna be enough.
To start.
To start.
Uh, yeah, if it doesn't fix our problem, we know that we have several facilities and our Parks Crew takes care of our facilities as well as all the parks. Um, there's been a lack of.
If it's a, a road median, is that a park maintenance or a public works maintenance?
If it's a, a what?
I'm just curious if it's like, if it's one of the medians and it's leading one of them, like.
Yeah, so it depends.
Yeah, no, it's.
Great question, it depends. Um, actually, I can give you a brief update on that too, so. Medians, for example, um. Jewelberry Median, medians on Highway twenty-six, medians on uh, Bell, those are all part of the street department's functions, they're within the transportation. Um, right-of-way, the median that is um. Avril, Avril Parkway, I think I say it wrong every time I say it. That one has, for whatever reason, I, I can't speak to why it's been determined a Parks Median, but for whatever reason, that has been historically maintained by parks. I think there's a lot of just uh, odd dibbying up of some things that have happened because of the staff we had in the past, and who could take on this added chore and who could take on that added chore? So I mean, it's a valid question as to, you know, who does what.
I'd like to see part of that addressed in what you're trying to do.
Yeah, and there's, um, we actually have a plan, we're working on that right now, Tiana's gotten um. A bid from our existing landscaping company to see what it would cost to add a few other spots in town that are chronic. Um, issues that we just don't have the capacity to maintain. Um, modifying that contract does come with some other cost saving because you'd be adding some additional work to it, and so, um. I don't have final numbers yet, but we do have a plan in place to better maintain some medians that were, are chronic.
You have a weed whacker person for the public works, right? A weed whacker.
Seasonally or, yeah, there is a seasonal street employee.
Right.
I've done a lot of weed whacks.
I don't, you, you guys don't live on main, we're like, a bluff, but, and I think they, are they on already?
Uh, they are not, no.
Okay, I thought somebody whacked, heard of my weeds today.
We, I mean, we've had a public works crew really trying to hit what they can.
Yeah, no, I mean, okay, so what it is, is they go along and, and whack all the weeds in the drainage ditch on the right road right-of-way. And, you know, and they do the medians, I mean, it used to, I don't know if they did the medians though, I don't know if that was in their scope of work.
Not usually, I mean, oftentimes it was, you know, an eighteen-year-old fresh out of high school, the medians, especially on Highway twenty-six are a challenge, you need more than one person. Because you've got someone either driving a truck or blocking up the lane of the highway, or, you know, trying to provide that safety buffer there. Um, so historically, the, the street summer help has not done those, um. More dangerous, I guess, for lack of a better term, uh, median work, but.
But I guess. It seems like we're trying to give more street work to the parks folks. And we're, that doesn't feel right to me, I mean, I feel like we already have a street person, we, and the public works needs more to do the medians and all that, that they, that we have to have, then. I, I guess I don't, I mean, I, I'm all for working together, but everybody's stretched thin, and so.
Yeah, and, and maybe I didn't um. Make this very clear, so the work that Tiana's doing and getting a quote with our existing landscaping company for future median maintenance. She's just taking the contract lead in those conversations, it's not the Parks Crew or the Parks Budget that's picking up those street, um, those street medians, but. We needed one point of contact instead of two or three, and she manages the um, landscaping contract for all the facilities, and so it made sense for her just to sort of lead those. Contract discussions, but it would still be paid for out of other sources. Yeah. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Little bit of a tangent thrown in there, but that's all I got.
Any uh, update on Tickle Creek Trail opening?
Uh, I do not have a date, I know that um. Uh, I forget the tree care company's name, I don't want to say the wrong one, um, was it Oregon Tree Care?
I saw him out there today.
That's what I wanted to say, but I didn't want to misspeak. Uh, I knew they were coming out this week, I didn't realize they were already out today, so there's a couple more um, rounds of some hazard trees that need to be cleaned up, but we're getting much closer.
Right, okay.
And for those that are listening, you know. We've gotten a lot of questions about, why isn't it open? And the answer is because of those hazard trees, it's, you know, like a bunch of matchsticks that have fallen and. At any point in time, if that one branch that's holding up this tree gives way and you've got a whole other domino effect, and so. It's really from a standpoint of safety and, and caution that we want to make sure all those hazardous trees are removed safely and correctly before we reopen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, oh, not Carl, man, John, I just said, you've, I've had enough.
We've had enough of you, man. Too much, but I do have a couple of things, so first of all, um. I don't like four-three votes, it's not my favorite. But, and I didn't want to bring it up because I don't felt, feel like it mattered in the hearing, but I still remain very much in favor of Sarah looking at this. And adding some economic incentives to offset what we just put on those items, because. It helps, it, to me, it's, it's the right use of permanent rental money and it keeps the street funds solid, so. This. I, I hope there's, I hope that's more of a seven-o kind of discussion we can have in the future, and hopefully we can have it. Sooner, because some of those folks would, it'd be nice for them to know that, that we would have some sort of incentive for programs.
Two properties, pardon?
I think it only applies to two properties. Yeah, but it's, but it's the one point four million dollar one, which is the big, you know, so. Um. Uh, yeah, that, that is a good point. Uh, second issue, um, we have the new parking lot. And the for-sale signs are down, and now it's just a big empty homeless, potential homeless camp. So, my question to you is. Whether we know now or whether you need to research, I don't really care, but what rules do we have in place in terms of ordinance to prevent it from turning into a overnight parking lot? Or uh, homeless camping or so forth? You know, what rules do we have and how do we get signage on it to make sure those rules are communicated to people who. Now know that AEC is not looking anymore.
Yeah, so what I can tell you, um, just offhand, and there's probably a little bit of research I need to do to answer your question um, fully, but offhand, we've talked about um. The signage that needs to be ordered, I don't know if that's been ordered yet, or if it's just been instructed to be ordered, but no uh, camping, no overnight parking, um. Just to be clear and direct, I'm gonna get that posted. Um. I don't have ordinance language in front of me, but the same ordinance language that applies to our other parking lots would apply to this one as well, it doesn't specifically call out. Heritage Square Parking Lot, it just says parking, you know, in general, and so those um, restrictions would apply to this lot as well.
Can it lock overnight? I was wondering that, should we just lock?
It has the potential to lock overnight.
Well, you're gonna keep out of there those people living in the cars, you're not gonna keep anybody from camping in there.
We're getting camping behind the white buildings at times too, we've had some people.
Yeah.
Doing drugs back there and other things.
Yeah, and that one, at least.
They knocked them out, at least recently.
Yeah, the recent one that they've uh, found permanent housing and they've been relocated, and that vehicle's been towed. Um, preventing overnight parking or camping or abundance of litter or, or whatever those negative visual um. Things are, is definitely been a conversation, we've had a lot internally about how to prevent that, and the last thing I want is. A very nice, flat, well-maintained parking lot to turn into a problem spot, especially.
And we've also.
Further into the downtown area.
We also talked about monetizing it for special events and things, and I would like to see you explore that. You know, there's a. Real easy solutions, some cities are going to where it's online only, you know, they download the smart app.
Downtowns and that.
Paid the fee, and you don't have to have the meter box, no credit card processing, it's all posted online, that seems like a really. Good thing that we could do is, you know, at least for special events.
Yeah, she did that with all of her, her box.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Carl? Uh, Jenny's gone, and I just wish that she was still here, I would just really want to compliment her on the negotiations with City of Portland, I know how uncomfortable that is, um. Had a very small piece of that many years ago, and it never is fun, but we got the cheapest rate in. The list of those who are still in the system, so.
Yes.
Really. Jenny, if you're listening, or people can tell her later on, I really appreciate that. This is, I have a dog in this fight, so I'm gonna um, talk about it anyway. Counsel has talked about getting our rate increases small, but often. And, and my dog in the fight is, is I pay the transit tax every year faithfully and abundantly. I don't want to see it go really big all of a sudden. Uh, is there some talking or thinking about making small increases as are needed, or. Wh- whatever that process would be, I guess I would not want to see a jump in horrendous amounts.
Are you, just specifically transit taxes is what your question?
That's the one that just came up in the, in the um. Um, consent decree, I was reading in there the conversations about. The transit uh, process and so on, I was just thinking, I haven't seen anything for transit tax for many years, and I pay it.
We have not.
Pay it.
We have not increased the transit tax rate since it was implemented, um, we have no plans to do so, we're able to, you know, fortunately Andy and just. Transportation in general has a lot of grant funding, and so they're able to do the great work that they do, funded mostly with um, grant funds and a small match from that transit tax, and so at the current time being. We're gonna continue to operate efficiently.
I'm not gonna argue, I said I pay that every year.
At some point, there may need to be a conversation about that, um. But. Not in the near future.
Okay, alright. And we talked about it earlier, and I tried to keep my mouth shut because I know it takes a lot of time and energy to talk about lots of different things. But the medians in Jewelberry, they really look rough. I mean, they're really starting, they got dead trees, they have tall grass, and I'm sure fall will be fire danger, and it just looks terrible. Overgrown. We need to get that worked out, and thanks for trying to figure out who's supposed to be responsible for that. And we'll even talk about the stuff in front of the Forest Service, I'll let it go.
It's been mowed recently.
Yeah, it's starting to get tall again. It's certainly not the same quality as the little triangle there at bluff. Anyway, I'm done.
Um, I wanna, yeah. Show some appreciation for Jenny and the work she did getting those, um, that, that's a huge, you know, agreement for us thirty years. And also, um, the um, recognize y'all that did the ribbon cutting on the Cedar. Uh, trail, so that, that was very well done, I thought the trails. You know, pretty nice, it's beautifully laid out, the surrounding forest is gorgeous, it's just gonna be such a beautiful amenity. That was kind of y'all's first ribbon cutting with Rochelle and her crew and you, and, and I said, you know, for so many, and so. Just um, excited about that, I think folks are really, really um, happy to see that, so I appreciate that. Um, I have kind of heard a little bit about the, on Facebook, you know, folks kind of, and I have noticed, I don't know if it's just. I, I noticed there's kind of been increased amounts of. Law enforcement calls to certain areas of the highway and stuff, I kind of look at the, saying the, you know, police reports and, you know, they always say an address, and so I kind of look on Google Maps and where that happened. They'd always type it down, but it seems like there's also kind of questions about the. Um, uh. What do you call them, waivers or homeless, uh, what are they called?
Vouchers. You thought in the vouchers, that's west.
Right, and so, and you know, people are talking about that on Facebook and stuff, and I, you know, they're kind of talking about city, city, you know, go, come to a city council meeting, and I kind of feel like. I don't think, you know, I don't know hardly anything about it, and, you know, we're not the ones handing them out or. Uh, you know, sponsoring and stuff, and so I just kind of feel like we should have a little bit better understanding of what's being done. You know, what is the county doing, and so when people are asking about it, who, you know, who do they ask? Cause I don't want them to ask me, cause I honestly don't know what's going on, so somehow.
Writing our own vouchers for Sam sending them back to me.
So I, I would respond with a couple things, like Kathleen, I think, one is, I, I think. I, I'd like our staff to look at, one, communicating that the city has absolutely nothing to do with what's going.
Yes.
Um, you know, and the other is, is I think maybe we should, um, let's do it, maybe have Tyler reach out to. Um, the Nick and what's Nick's cohort's name, um. The heat?
Oh, yeah.
The heat. And see if they would join us, but, well, well, they're, they're kind of tasked with this, no, they're tasked with this up the county.
Okay.
And maybe have these, yeah, have these guys come in and meet us at an official work session.
Yeah.
And, and have a little Q and A about what they're doing, so they can answer some of our questions.
Or at the minimum, we haven't had a homeless task force meeting in a while, though, if it's, you know, more expedient to do it that way.
But let's work, but, but let's work it out.
Yeah.
But let's maybe have them come to, but, but in that, let's invite the other task force meetings to join us at that meeting.
Maybe. Maybe open that up for public comment.
Sure.
Whether, whether it's a work session or, so that public can come and ask questions.
Say some words, that'd be nice.
Yeah, just to get kind of some.
I like that.
Clarification on what's going on.
Cool, good call.
Rich.
I like that.
Oh, I have one thing, the libraries meeting is on Wednesday, the mayor has been invited to the meeting to um, talk a little bit about the library. Um, other library districts are um, work, considering um, revising our old, like, two thousand eight. Um, it's been revised since then, but the original was two thousand eight, I think, um, MOU, that um, they. Want some sort of flexibility on using some of the district funds that they get for um. Capital investment type stuff, whether it's replacing HVAC, or some of them are kind of going even further, like adding a wing or whatever, so. Um, the other districts are looking to revise their agreement that way, and um, our, our board is asking for. That to be um, to not happen, and for the. Instead of allowing the cities to make the decision to actually allow the unincorporated citizens outside the cities to weigh in on that proposal, because it does affect your. Total amount of dollars going to your. Library, you know, book purchasing and things like that that might affect them, so that's what they're presenting to the mayor, and he's going to.
Hurry up.
Hurry up. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rich.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with Lori, Kathleen, all that, maybe, maybe we do need to have a, a meeting, but I would really also like to hear, have them come to. The full council and kind of share with us how, how the um. How it's going for them throughout the county would be probably, I think, and I guarantee will be in the interest perspective. Nice. Um. One thing I heard, and I heard it pop up tonight, um, and it, it seems to be kind of a paramount issue, or it keeps getting brought up, is the, the road. Being plugged at three sixty second, you know, and not being nearby the high school during the day. Um, I, I, two, two questions, one is. That's something. Um, again, where are we, I guess, where are we at with the school board and council joint session, because that's a, a great topic, I think, to bring up. Um, amongst all the other stuff that we've talked about, and um. The other piece, is there something that we can do? I do not, I'm not in favor of. Going out and citing parents for trying to pick up their children and weaponizing, for lack of better terms, our, our parents, right? To, to make the school board do something. for lack of better terms, our, our parents, right? To, to make the school board do something. But is there something that we can do to compel the school board to have to fix that traffic issue? Much like we would with Dutch Brothers or 7-Eleven or any other business in town, um, if they were backing up onto Highway 26.
Okay. So I'll say one thing and then I'll turn it over to Chief Yamashita, uh, the chief and Superintendent Bayer and I met three weeks ago?
Two.
Two weeks ago.
I'm gonna say two.
And to talk about traffic issues during the high school and the middle school both. Um, we've got some drone footage to see what the actual issue from an aerial perspective is. Um, we pulled, you know, some old planning documents to determine what were and were not allowable entry and exit points to make sure that we don't provide incorrect information as far as, oh, just do this instead. That will fix the problem if there's a, a current order that doesn't allow it. Um, but I, I'll let you shed some additional light into.
Cover pretty much everything I was gonna do. I, you know, there's only really one true fix to that area and that's remove the medians.
That's what?
Remove the medians.
Yes.
That's the only true fix.
I, I disagree.
Well.
We should have never done that.
A hundred percent. Unless you somehow widen the road.
There you go.
But currently, the, the problem, as you well know, is that folks are coming and staging to go pick up their kids. I think that there are some things that we can do with the school district to reroute buses and to reroute the parents a little bit that will help that. But, um, we've got some really good drone footage, like Tyler said, that will show you exactly where the problems lie and what they are. Um.
Oh, that's good. Sorry.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go around this.
True statement, right? What time does the bell ring at the end of the day for the high school? 2:15 or 2:30?
Well, I, I, I want to say it's like 2:50. I don't know. It's like an odd number. It's not like.
If you're, if you're in that, on that street.
Yep.
Fifteen minutes before that bell. And there's an injury, a serious injury
Yep.
to a kid
Yep.
or anybody walking or car accident, you could not get an emergency vehicle up to them.
That's correct.
Cause the, it is blocked.
The only way, the only way to do it would be to go into the oncoming lane of travel and hope that there isn't somebody coming towards us.
I'm just gonna say, what they're doing is illegal. Okay. They're not allowed to be parked, you know, both on bluff and, and all we need to be putting is up signs that say no stopping or, uh, or parking. And, and, and that's, that's the laws it is now. And there are huge parking lots at the football field, over by the, um, tennis courts. Um, you know, there's all sorts of places that people can go pick up their kids and that you can stack up a bunch of cars in there to pick up your kids and, and stage those cars that don't involve blocking up Bell Street. So that's, you know, the kids might have to walk a little further over to the tennis courts to get picked up, but oh well. I just feel like that's, you know, taking out the medians and making, putting the solution on us when it's clear that that's not a legitimate use of our arterial roads is ridiculous.
Tell them.
But don't.
Moms.
You, you don't solve problems by demanding and running up rules up without involving the rest of the world.
This, this side of the post office is totally out of control. Totally out of control.
We're going, we're going around here, okay?
Lori. Can I just add one thing to, to this? Um, you know, one of the other conversations, without getting too far into the specifics of, of the, the conversation we had was looking at better use of parking lots and stuff that are at the school district site. So I think there's a long way to go between where we're at now and removing medians or where we're at now and citing people every day. I think there's some intermediate things that the school district can likely do that maybe we can be a good partner with them in finding a solution for it. There is some PR and messaging.
I, yeah, I think, I think it's really important to provide an alternative or at least help problem solve it rather than just write tickets. Cause all that's gonna do is black eye and create chaos with the parents. They're not gonna understand what to do in lieu of what they're doing now unless we have a plan for them and help re-educate them. It's been allowed to go on so long now that I, I, I'm not gonna write those people tickets. I mean, they've been allowed to do that for so long now. We need to provide an alternative.
Not a bell string.
Well, yeah, we need to provide an alternative.
Chief, thank you. And, and I, I actually, I support that and, and agree with that. Uh, but here's, here's what I do think. I do think this isn't, you, since COVID, one of the things that we're seeing is since COVID, I would venture to say like every other place that I'm aware of, bus ridership has dropped for multiple reasons, right? So that's part of the problem that we're seeing is it probably wasn't as big of an issue prior to 2020. But with that being said, many school districts, and it is a school district problem, and that's one of the problems with us going out and issuing tickets. I think it's gonna fall back on, on Sandy and ultimately our police department for, uh, as a negative black eye when it's a school district problem. So with that being said, they've invested money to get traffic flow engineers out there and re-examining their parking lots and the flow of traffic and all of that out there. And I would really like some pressure because I don't think they're gonna want to spend the money on their own. But I want to know if there's something that we can do to put that pressure so that it gets done. So that emergence to, to Chris's point tonight, so that, and, and, and the multiple times we've heard it, that those emergency vehicles can get there when that kid gets hit with a baseball or, or falls down or, or whatever tragedy happens. Um, but I, I think, I honestly think that until they come to the table, which doesn't seem to want to be so much, that it is a them problem. It's not an us problem. And I would like to see if there's some stuff that we can do to compel them to have to examine that. Because there is a lot of space out there that I think you can reroute some flows and, and maybe even change, yes, it's gonna take change and it's gonna take some, some smarter people than, than me or probably any of us coming to the table to figure out, but it is doable. And that's, and that's the challenge that is frustrating is it's doable, but they don't seem to have that interest. And that's the piece that I, I think we need to help them create that interest.
That's one of the reasons I wanted the drone footage was so we could really diagnose what the problem is and where it lies. So then we can get a better idea of how to fix it. And I felt like Superintendent Bear was
He's receptive.
Very receptive.
To finding a solution.
You approached it with Dad. Thank you for that.
Good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome. Alright, I think I've gotten huffy enough tonight.
Yeah. Hey, I want to document the fact that this side of the council is clogged. I want you to stay there.
And, and while it's not popular, I agree with Chief Yamashita that, sorry, guys, those medians at some point are gonna have to go away.
I have it written down.
They are going to have to go away. So, um, uh, just a couple of things, um, quickly. Uh, I thought that trail opening was fantastic, um, well attended
Yeah.
by members of the community, uh, several people. I'd say 25 people walk the trail, maybe more. I'm not a good counter of people when they're out and about. You get them in a room and I can tell you, but, um, uh, I thought the turnout was great. Um, and little kids all the way up to older adults, uh, who needed, uh, walking sticks. So, uh, the trail's beautiful. It's in great shape. Um, it is gonna probably open up a can of worms for some other things though because of its location. So, which will fall into your ball wax.
Excellent.
Right? But, uh, so anyway, so, uh, great job by, uh, by Rochelle and the parks and, and the turnout was fantastic. So, and then just the other thing, because I'd never heard of this weed, um, and I believe it was Mr. Castle that mentioned it. Um, can we get on that? It looks like a preemergent herbicide, but it's like talking to, to all cattle, all animals and there are cows and all sorts of cattle, uh, animals along that.
Cause I brought that up. You brought it with me. I, um, I got a better understanding of the issue, but as far as a solution to the issue, no, there's, there hasn't been uh, progress made there, but I
Yeah.
Once again, the assertion is that our contractor brought it to the area. And I just, I'd like to prove or disprove that.
Well, either way, can we eradicate it? Can we get out there and spray it? Because it's, it's also like I'm concerned obviously about people's livestock, but even more so, it's, um,
It spreads.
More, it's actually more likely to cause poison to children because it flowers and it's pretty and they touch it and it can be deadly. So let's, uh, let's get rid of it.
Is it on our land?
It's, it's on that Bell Street.
The right way?
It showed up after the construction.
Okay.
So, yeah, unless, I, I get your point, but I just wanted, let's fix it. And that's all that.
I, so my, just for clarifying, if our contractor did it, there may be some liability.
That's great.
That, that's the concern there.
I just want us to get rid of it soon. Cause it's that time of year where it's gonna be growing. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Chris.
I would just say thank you to the council for listening to my not so well put together argument, um, for the funding district. I wasn't supportive of 10, but it didn't, it didn't go. They got, they got the 20. I, I understand the, the need for it and I just appreciate you all listening to me. I wasn't on my top game presentation, but, um, I don't like a four, three vote either like Don. But you know what? Sometimes we all can't have the same opinion and it will be different. And that's why we have said. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I have not had any committee meetings and planning commission or development, so I have no update there. Um, I too would like to thank Jenny for her work in negotiating the settlement with the UPA and the extension of our ER years. And then I want to put a plug in for two upcoming events that I haven't heard nobody talk about yet. I'm gonna get them both wrong. I know the dates. Um, there is Earth Day and there is Arbor Day. And they're both happening next week, I think.
Solve cleanup.
Yeah.
That's right.
And, um, so put a plug out for those because we're doing something for them. So.
Just to be clarified, Earth Day is April 26th.
Thank you.
And Solve Cleanup is this Saturday. And also this, uh, Quanis is doing the sportsman breakfast at the fire station. And that starts at seven. So you can go have breakfast and then come do the Solve Cleanup. And then, uh, the next Saturday after that is the, uh, Fri- what, what day?
I can wind up all of you. I got the 50 year anniversary of the senior center coming up.
That's right.
But wait, there's more. The community cleanup day, um, with our garbage company, Saturday, April 20th.
Twenty eighth. That's the same day as Solve.
Yeah, so it all falls.
Wednesday 50th, remind me.
Is that Friday? The 19th?
I want to say it's this Thursday, but hold on just one second.
Maybe Friday.
It's just 50 and older going? Is that what we're doing? I would add just
Be on Medicare.
One, one more appreciative thanks, uh, to the Tyler and the team. Uh, Tickle Creek, I, I just started recently walking a lot more. And Tickle Creek was my trail and I can't do it anymore. So I'm up and down, uh, the Barco and it is crowded. I do it twice a day, 7:30 in the morning and at 3:30. And it's crowded out there. So I, I heard the chainsaws buzzing today. I can't wait for the Tickle Trail to open back up. So thank you for the work.
Alright, a couple of things. When it was, shoot, I already forgot it.
April 18th.
April 18th, two to four, it's the 50th anniversary, uh, at the senior center. Uh, on the three, four votes, uh, I don't want them all the time, but, uh, I don't mind three, four votes with this council.
No.
Uh, because we talk and, you know, we debate and we voice round these topics. And having been around, I guess, politics for a while, it, it honestly makes me like believe in what we do. Uh, because we're actually able to have grown up conversations in a room on a topic and not all be able to agree, but also then take on the next topic as a united unit and community member. So I just, I appreciate all of you and your willingness and ability to do that. Um, uh, and just on the Parks and Trail, uh, grand opening, I just wanted, uh, mention can compound, that's the word we're using tonight. On what Lori used said, and that was just the different kinds of people at that ground, uh, opening, just all walks of life, different age groups, all using the trail for different reasons and different ways. And I just thought that was awesome. Uh, for a more controversial topic, I guess, uh, these medians. Um, uh, don't get Tom Ellis, the mayor of Happy Valley going on this. He'll go all night. Uh, he hates those meetings for all the emergency reasons that you're talking about, Chris. Um, I think we need to like have a conversation about medians for several reasons. And, and Carl, I don't want to have that, this debate tonight, right? Cause I know we, we have a lot of feelings on it, but let's have the debate um, the way our council does in the future. One is because of the maintenance, you know? Uh, there's a lot of park type maintenance that happens when we put up these medians. There's the emergency type problems that can, can arise. My understanding from what Carl says out of frustration when I mentioned this is that there's good, you know, environmental reasons for these. So we need to look at that, but let's look at it, talk about it. Let's make sure we're doing it the right way, the most economical way, the best maintenance way, right? Um,
I buy into that.
Alright, cool.
I told Chris I've been saying it for years. It probably took him saying it for you guys to listen.
Oh, yeah, no, I've agreed.
I've been saying it.
Yeah. And then, right? And then the last thing I wanted to say, and this is for like, this would be for new construction, new roads. Uh, but, um, Carl, um, hosted a little meet and greet with Christine Jordan, saying he's running for state rep. Um, one of the conversational topics out of there is, you know, every session, the legislature kind of picks that big item that they're taking on. This last time was housing, little bit of infrastructure, which we got left out on. Um, this next go around, it looks like it's gonna be really transportation heavy. Um, and so while we'll want to maintain a strong water ask, it's probably gonna make sense to have in our back pocket some sort of transportation ask. And, uh, Lori, whether it's, you know, that further extension, like you mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, or I, I think some of us love the idea of industrial to Jarl Road, kind of what it can do for some of those properties. But we set up at a future meeting, maybe to have conversations about, uh, maybe I didn't mention your favorite project. Sorry if I didn't. But, uh, let's just have a conversation about what a potential, um, council, not main ask, cause we know we're, I mean, water wastewater is a major problem, but maybe kind of that.
Bypass might be a little too big.
I'm not looking for you know me, but I'm not, I'm not, maybe a little, maybe the on-ramp too.
You saw the Oregonian said Tina's gonna pull a lot of that wastewater money from rural communities.
So that, so that's my final update, actually. Yeah. So, uh, Governor's come out and mentioned, um, potentially saying that she pulls certain projects if it didn't need to lead to immediate housing. Uh, we've talked to Nellie, our lobbyist, about that and reached out to some folks. We're gonna keep an eye on it. Uh, cause we feel we can show with our project, especially with some of the, these discussions we're having that we could, man, we, we could really show.
With some funding.
We're shovel ready and
Yeah.
Well, especially, you know, so, well, anyways, I can't go into, but we, yeah. So I think there's some opportunities in that conversation for us. So we'll see where that goes.
Cool.
Again, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. We'll close out.
Thanks.